All right, let's call this meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. We're gonna start with our department head meeting. So we'll start by going around the room. Start with Craig. What's going on in your world, Craig?
Right. Morning, everybody. First and foremost, budgets, obviously, you know, but I've been got my nose in most of this month already. We have Cummins Electric coming for a walkthrough um to give us some quotes for re- rewiring uh all three buildings. That happens June twenty second at nine AM. So if you see us walking around, that's what we're doing. We've got two more to get to. Uh they'll walk around, so that'll get us our our three quotes. See how much that project is going to cost. Um we had a Exoft assessor server crash at the beginning. Actually, it was Friday night. Uh that's what I walked into beginning of Monday morning. Um it was due to snapshots, um their little tiny little backups. Um that our backup server creates. Messed it up. Uh we was able to get it back. We're back up and running with minimal data loss. Uh just a little bit of Friday data that I think Jenny put in on Friday. Um was what we ended up losing, so it was easy to create. It's back up. It's normal and running well again. Christine and I, the health department, we had a meeting with Laserfish. We all know Laserfish. We no longer have a Laserfish server anymore. Um it is now completely the city's. Christine wants to know if anyone else is interested in any kind of document management system countywide. You know, we do have DocuWare and child support, um but that's strictly for child support um until they move off onto the state system. Like I said, we've had Laserfish before, and I don't know what Christine wants. Christine has used DocuWare. Um she likes DocuWare. Um I don't think she was too impressed with Laserfish. But Laserfish is something that I think most of us already know and we've had. But Christine will be, um she has money to fund this. But she was interested in if anyone else was, you know, you know, if you're interested in it.
Right, it might be interesting.
We can start having some meetings and and seeing where we go from there.
So is this primarily for scanning and retrieval of electronic documents?
Right.
So um obviously, there's the system that the clerk is using.
Right.
And I, that's a proprietary software, I believe. I'm not sure what it's called, but.
Yeah, I I don't remember what it's called.
And and he's talked about uh working with other offices, so that might be so- something we should investigate.
Okay, yeah, we'll do. Also, this goes back to kind of planning and zoning and the health department. Guts is now offering permitting. Uh I I don't know if you even wanna even go down that route. Uh but it's something that if you're kind of interested in and maybe just taking a look at.
What's name of it?
Um it's it's Guts.
Just like it sounds?
Just like it sounds, G U T dash S, but it's the same system that the treasurer uses. And there's, I, there may only be one or two counties that are on it because it's so new. But I I thought I'd give you the information. I can give you Chris's um stuff if you wanted to get ahold of him, you can. Uh but it should integrate, you know, right into our guts uh program, so. The N facts, the main N facts kiosk for the courtrooms and all that is here. It's sitting over in the courthouse. I have yet to see any of the monitors or any kind of brackets or anything for them. But the main, the main kiosk is here. Also, I have a a webpage I can send you guys for guidance for the one over here. We just have a little little page made up, let you guys see and critique and say, no, this is completely off or, you know, we need to add this or go with it. Um I'll I'll email you all that. Sheriff Department, the garage has horrible, horrible internet. It's not really horrible, but for what they're wanting to do. It's bad. You know, running fiber between the buildings is gonna be very expensive. So we came up with a solution to do a Wi-Fi bridge. It's basically like two satellite dishes pointing that. And we're gonna use that to to get about three times faster in the garage. Um so they should be happier with their with their internet and the cars that are coming up and downloading. We will need buildings and grounds. There may be a few, a couple walls we need to drill through. But other than that, that should really all, this really shouldn't be that that big of a project. We got our nine one one authority cyber assessment back. I shared, I shared a lot of our policies with them. They were happy to get them. It was okay. I was kinda open for a better score. They they seem to be really policy driven, where in our office, it's kind of baked in with our jobs. So it's not like, do I have a policy on this? No, but you know, this guy comes in, he knows exactly this part of his daily routine is is to do that. I'm gonna probably be looking at a, it's called a log server. So instead of, we we get our logs through email. And then we have to manually go through it. What a log server would do is bring all of our logs into one central location and then proactively flag any any bad things that that are happening in the logs. Instead of us going through them every day and then reacting to them, it may give us a little bit uh more of a time to to react to to something. We're gonna start the installation of our new physical hosts for VMware. Um I'm still waiting on our sand driver, um but I'm just gonna go ahead and update update our hosts anyways. They're sitting over there in a box. It's not doing anyone any good. Um so we're gonna go ahead and do that. This is a good one, so starting probably towards the end of the month, there'll be new security training coming out. So uh that'll start. Um everybody should be receiving emails here um towards the end of the month saying that it starts and you'll have training. I'm still waiting for an opening date for the I O T cyber grant. Um it's coming soon. It just seems like, you know, it's 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 a long wait, you know, wait, wait, wait. I didn't know if that was something that E M A wanted to kind of look at as well. I'll have A J contact John and then see, see if that's something you guys can use. Uh and I'm still waiting on pricing for the change from copper to fiber for our telephone P R I's. Joel's supposed to be giving me that, and he has not. I contacted him again today. He's supposed to have it by Saturday. The watch guard body body cam server, we're pulling it out of the virtual machine and making it into a physical. Been kind of a nightmare, but I think this will definitely do better. Just with the storage requirements for that. And then any, any word on desks?
No.
Still at the warehouse? And that is all I have.
Okay, let's back up to Matthew.
Okay. So on the E M A side of the house, um we have completed our emergency action plan for the four H fair, uh getting ready for that next week. Uh that's been distributed to our public safety partners, and we have a planning meeting with them this evening. Uh making sure that we're all on the same page and ready to, ready to go for our our annual events at the four H fair. We'll have uh one of our dispatchers at the fairgrounds each evening, uh supporting our public safety uh responders uh from six PM until the track event closes or approximately midnight. And uh our incident dispatch team will be handling that. Uh we're currently working on uh finishing up our after action uh report from the My Way uh trading fire. We had a good, very productive uh after action meeting with all of the key players a few weeks ago. Uh so we'll have that official report uh ready to to go out. What things went right, what things we could do better if it happened again, and those types of things. Uh just normal procedure for any type of large scale event like that, uh to make sure that we're we're we've got the tools we need and are using them appropriately. Uh our multi-hazard mitigation plan, such a long process, uh like Craig was saying, hurry up and wait uh type of thing. That has been submitted to FEMA. We're awaiting their final approval. Once we get that final approval back from them, uh we'll be coming back to you for your review and uh request for promulgation. Uh and then we'll go to each incorporated entity uh part of that plan. Uh all the small towns uh that were involved in that planning, and they also then have to adopt and and promulgate uh by ordinance uh this mitigation plan for them to be official in the eyes uh of FEMA should something happen. Uh towards the end of this month, uh we are having um the first public safety uh solar eclipse planning meeting. I know there's been other meetings been going on, um but we are calling all of our stakeholders together at the end of the month. Uh maybe a little later than some of our other counterparts in other counties, um but at the same time ahead of some of the others. I I wanted to attend a a couple of the other counties to see what they were doing. I figured why reinvent the wheel if someone else is doing a great job, so. Uh and I'm glad I did. Uh when I attended Preble Counties in Ohio, uh they actually had a um astronomer that spoke from the perspective of someone who goes and travels and and does the solar eclipse things. Um and she was fantastic and and added a wonderful insight, so she will be speaking at hours as well to kind of give the the perspective of someone who uh attends those and what she has seen go right in other areas of the country and what she has seen uh go wrong. So I think that will add uh add to that uh planning meeting. Uh June twenty ninth is when uh when that will be at one o'clock. Uh so uh we're looking forward to that and getting that group together as to what we need to be doing, how we need to be preparing. Uh what kind of staff do we need to have in place? Uh that those types of things, so. On the nine one one side of the house, uh we had all of our employees attend uh training. We made it mandatory on stress management and importance of sleep. Uh this was put on by Richmond Fire Department, and it was a fantastic speaker. Uh and so that was a great training for our folks because they they struggle with probably both of those uh things. So we thought it was very fitting and very appropriate. Wanted to let the commissioners know that uh in the past couple of weeks, uh we had to enact the M O U and mutual aid agreement with Union County. If you remember right, uh Mr. Doyner, I know you weren't here, but in twenty twenty, we signed an M O U with Union County that should their nine one one center have issues, what be it, equipment failure, staffing problems. Uh we were capable of taking over their uh nine one one center and handling dispatch for their responders and answering nine one one calls from their citizens. Uh we did have to enact that this, the last couple of weeks uh due to staffing issues that they've had. Uh and so we were asked to cover their nine one one center from midnight to six AM. Uh it's now been four different nights over the last two weeks. Uh they uh have their staffing back up. Uh their person's getting ready to be released from training. Don't foresee that being uh anything moving forward, but it was a good test of that M O U to make sure that we could do it. Uh and it went uh went very well uh and seamless. Uh the responders, uh had they not been told, probably wouldn't even have known they were talking to Wayne County. Uh and same as the the citizens that called nine one one.
How many, how many calls did you get during that talk, Matthew?
Uh we covered a total of twenty six hours for them. We had three nine one one calls, all of which were hangup calls. So not, not a single officer was dispatched. Yeah, so, but that's okay. Uh it worked and uh two of the hangup calls were from the uh office at the Whitewater State Park, so.
So is the mapping working out still?
Yeah.
Union County data?
Correct.
Any other additional data you'd like to see from Union County or to the map?
No, I think we're good. We have um, we have the all their uh center, center line, street. All that data. We have their address points. We have their uh E S N layers, which tells us uh, I mean, there's only two law enforcement agencies, so if it's not the city of Liberty, it's the county. Uh and there's only three fi- or or, yeah, two fire departments, Liberty and West College Corner. Uh Everton covers a small corner, um and Abington covers a small corner, but our E S N layer shows that. So uh that was our, and it, of course, they were already built into our CAD. And so when when we add a call from Union County, it auto-populates who the responders should be anyway. So it it worked really well.
Good.
Yeah, very functional. Uh I know you all signed a request to hire last week, and I thank you, but now I have another one. I had a employee uh returning their two week resignation just yesterday. Uh it's a full-time position, uh already budgeted, of course. So I request to um sign that document if.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, if motion carries.
Thank you. Which leads me to my last item. I just kind of wanted to let you know and maybe look for a little guidance, and I was hoping Mr. Holsher would stay here, but I'll I'll get with him. Due to uh some staffing, uh being down-staffing, uh training, uh an employee on F M L A. Uh I am going to go over my budget for overtime this year. Uh I only have about five thousand left, uh and over the last four or five weeks, I've spent about five or six thousand. So I'm only, I've only got about another month left. Previous years, I've been able to use remaining what was in a holiday fund or maybe a line item of one of these vacated full-time to, you know, kind of. And we've just made that right at the end of the year. I didn't know with uh with being new administration whether that would still, whether I need to worry about going before council and letting them know or moving money now, or waiting till a little closer to the end of the year, so.
I would think that you should uh talk to council, let them know what's going on.
Okay.
And maybe be prepared to request a transfer.
Okay.
Being this early in the year.
Right.
They need to know that there's some issues there.
I'll request to be on the July meeting then.
And you may wanna think about whether you need to adjust your budget for next year.
Right, right. And that's all I have unless anybody has anything from.
Questions for Matthew? If not, let's go.
I have a question. Did, did you speak, I'm assuming you spoke with John about security meeting and tornado practice?
Yes, yeah, he's.
I did get a copy of the plan. Is this something that you wanna tweak a little bit since it's dated in two thousand ten, or is that, have you?
Well, I'll need to get with the sheriff's department, cause that's the sheriff's department's plan. Um and and I I assume that E M A assisted with it back in the day. Uh but yes, it clearly needs to be updated or at least reviewed, eyes light on it to see what needs to be updated. But yes, he did mention that. He was gonna follow up with you to see what the expectation was of our department, but we'll we'll help and assist in whatever they need.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
I would just like to add, I'm sure you've been working with Lieutenant Kevin Smith, who replaced Donnie Benedict at Richmond Police Department. He's been really responsive, I've liaison with the police department for the uh Fair Board. And uh he was really helpful in uh putting up the stop sign on Salisbury Road well in advance so people get accustomed to stopping where they don't normally stop at the entrance to the fairgrounds. And also, in case you haven't been informed, Salisbury Road will close next Friday night at about nine thirty uh for the fireworks. So if your people are planning to come, Salisbury Road will be closed next Friday.
Okay, yeah. I think they've done that traditionally in years past with the the fireworks.
Every year.
Yeah, yeah, but thank you.
Jeremy will be out there as well.
All right, Gunty.
The big thing going on in the G I S world right now is I'm kind of cleaning house. Taking an inventory of all of our layers, how they're served up, where they're served to. Who's using them and uh and then going through the layers that we don't use and archiving them to ultimately delete them. Many times, we'll duplicate layers. It's kind of like, you know, when your house feels full of junk, you normally clean it up. Storage is cheap, so we just keep buying a new house. And we've been doing it since nineteen ninety six and and um the house is getting, well, it's a, it's a big house. I I don't know how many terabytes of data I store, but there's a lot of terabytes. And so this is just a matter of just kind of making the process better. And and basically, I'm the only one left that remembers data from nineteen ninety six or two thousand and eight. And kind of what started it is a couple of the newer employees that they'll call me and they'll say, you know, I'm looking for trail data. Well, I find trails here, I find trails there, I find trails there. You know, what's the authoritative trail data? You know, so tho- those are the kind of things I'm working through, and then of course. So that's the big thing, just kind of organizing the the file system and how we distribute the data. It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a big job, yeah, so it'll be ongoing. Everything else, it seems to be running fine. Websites are running. Employees are, not employees that I have, but Gray's in over at the city. He's doing a lot over at the city in terms of their web base, web presence. We need to work a little bit better on our, on the county side. I need to work better on working on getting a, some data out there for, that doesn't fall under the Schneider beacon realm of G I, you know, of G I S, so, of any other information type map. So if anybody has a need for something that you need geographically located or or shown geographically for any other type of project, you know, we have capabilities of publishing a webpage and putting these layers out there for the public to see. Even ultimately, you know, we could come up with like a complaints data or something, potholes, something along that line, you know, we could do. We don't have any potholes in Wink.
In surrounding counties, you could, you could mark.
So I mean, those type of things, you know, just keep those things in mind in the future. That's it.
All right, any questions for Gunty? If not, we'll go on to the health department. I apologize. Is it, is it Becca?
Yeah, yeah.
So Becca and Dan, what?
So Christine's not here today, so she asked Becca and I to be here on her. Uh Becca's our new clinical director, um so she, you'll be seeing her a lot more. Uh Craig kind of covered what Christine was wanting to ask as as far as the DocuWare, that is what she was, she was leaning towards. But if other county agencies were going towards something else, then we would join that. We wanna stay uniformed if all possible. Uh so it sounds like that's already being explored. As far as the the GeoPermits goes with the guts, I am all for it, to to look for different software. I'm still having issues with GeoPermits. Uh for instance, I have an Amish family building a house that the parcel's not been split yet. So forever, this parcel will be, this septic system will be under a guy, a different guy's name, a different address, you know. So if we go to search that ten years from now, we're gonna have a hard time finding it. So um my only worry about switching midstream like this is could Geo integrate with guts? What what I've already done at GeoPermits, could we integrate that into the new system? So I don't lose all that data or have, you know, have three different softwares I have to go to. But by all means, I think we're willing to explore that, especially if, she said the treasurer's office uses it.
Yeah, treasurer's assessor's.
Yeah, I think if we could make us all the same, it would, you know, when taking payments and things like that, cause we're about to go online with food permitting. And when we've done a test run on a food payment, the payment's going through fine, it's ending up, but it's integrating with septic. So there's no way to separate the two payments as to, so basically, we have to go back, we have to call the consumer and ask them, did you pay for a food permit or did you pay for a septic permit? Then we can get it logged and wind correctly. But I I think we would explore that, absolutely. As far as the fair goes, uh we're gonna be out there. We're kind of uh sprinkling out there this week right now. We got a few booths already set up that we're expecting. Uh we're gonna go out full force on Friday to try to open up all food vendors that are are wanting to be opened. Uh and then we'll have staff out there every day of the week uh from twelve PM to eight PM to cover any questions as far as uh services that we offer or to respond to complaints as far as food complaints with food vendors and things like that. The health department's gonna be, me is gonna be attending the tabletop tomorrow with uh Indiana American Water. I believe E M A is also gonna be there. Uh so we're gonna get training on on them and and prep for any water emergencies that could happen within the service area of A- American Water. Mike wanted to ask you on the Ford Escape. I know we changed that to countryside. Do you remember that? I still have it on my calendar for Whitsmore.
Twenty ninth, I think.
The twenty ninth, okay.
End of June.
So I think the album was like July six.
I wanna, I wanna say it's twenty nine. I got it on the calendar.
And then we're, we're trying to bring the clothes uh through the emergency preparedness grant, uh bioterrorism grant. It has several different names, but we we have paid for a storage unit um over off Williamsburg Pike for the last year to store some of our larger items in that we don't have room for. That that grant cycle is coming to an end, so we're, we're starting to empty out that storage unit. Most of it will fit in my large trailer, um but we do have some big items that may need to be stored in the storage unit across from the the sheriff's department jail. We have approximately twenty privacy curtains that are on wheels that we use during the the mass COVID clinics. And we have a large stanchion cart that holds approximately twenty stanchions that that won't be able to be stored more than likely in the trailer, so. Those two items, but the the biggest concern is the curtains. They take up a lot of room, and there's no easy way to stack them. Other than that, I think that's all we have. Anything on the clinical side?
Just working on the um local K P I's for the Governor's Public Health Commission. Should we decide to opt in on that? We set up a health equity and um office culture training with Purdue yesterday that we're pretty excited about. I think that's, that's pretty much all I have, other than what he said.
All right. Mike?
Did get the parking lot, the fairgrounds all paved up, doing some shoulder work. Uh we did get all the smoothing finished up uh from after the winter. Cleaning equipment, co-patching, uh the Hagerstown salt barn, uh we did get it all finished. Haven't been back over for a little while. Some black rain, I don't know if the grass is growed up around it or not, but grass seed was planted. Um doing some ditching, picking up trash and uh down trees from storms. Uh installed some culver pipes. We're doing some patch paving. Um we're getting close to probably halfway through it, um through the county. Uh working on our mowing, the total kill spray on around the signs and guard rail is completed. Uh painting equipment, putting gravel on driveways behind the pav- paper, and then gravel over pipe cuts and asphalt over pipe cuts. And then we did, I don't know if anybody's ever been to the High Point in Indiana. It's up on Elliot Road. Uh but we have, over the years, have had a lot of problems with signs being stolen. Everybody wants the High Point sign for some reason, I don't know, but uh, so we went through signs quite often. Um so I came up with an idea to put a rock up there, so we got a pretty good sized rock.
I think that's a great idea.
Hopefully, they don't paint it, but uh but um if anybody would like to go up there, it's in. We got it engraved. They got it engraved last week. I think it was last week they finished engraving on it, so. We gravelled up around there, so I think it may be a drawing point next year with the eclipse coming in, close to Wayne County. Close to Wayne County, I, I think it's gonna become a big draw, so we've kind of cleaned up that area up there, but if you get a chance, it's, I think it's pretty cool.
So it's gonna take some heavy equipment if somebody wants to steal that sign.
Yeah, the, the, the rock, I believe, is about four and a half tons. Nobody's just gonna walk away with it. I had a request for a blind deaf child sign, uh, over on Rice Road. Uh, we currently don't have any of those. It's not a recognized sign in the MUTCD, which is the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So it's not a recognized sign in that where it's, you know, like children playing on the road. You don't put those signs up, they're not recognized signs. But we had the request, I thought would bring it to you guys to see if you want us to go out of. Typically, I stay within the MUTCD book and follow the regulations of feds in Indiana. But I don't wanna be the bad person and say no, uh, but I wanted to bring it to you guys to see. You know, we don't have any of those signs, we don't carry them and stop, we'd have to order them. But if, if it's something you guys would want us to do or not.
The child is both blind and deaf?
Yes.
Oh my, what would this cost?
Uh, I'd have to look at the price scientifically, you're probably a hundred dollars or something like that.
I think we should.
Yeah, I have no problem.
Right, that's, let's, let's go ahead and do it, Mike, thank you.
And then I got you pictures last Friday, uh, if you recall, it's been a month or two ago. Up on Clyde Moberly, we had a, uh, person putting some large, uh, trees or logs and stuff. That was close to the road and so forth. So last Friday, the sheriff department went up there and there was boulders that were in the middle of the roadway. Um, so they called us, requested us to come move the boulders. Um, the property owner then decided that he wanted to keep the rocks and he would move them off the roadway. So they're off the roadway, that's kind of where the pictures are, but then, of course, Monday morning, I get a phone call from another property owner on the road. That doesn't like where the rock are placed at, so. I'm bringing it back to you, I mean, obviously, on a normal county road, if those rocks were there or a tree was close, that close to the road. I would go out and I would remove it and take care of it, but I know this one's a little different. I think he's been a, uh, different property owner, I guess you could say that, that the county is aware of. Or has had issues with in the past on a lot of other different items, so I didn't want to get anybody shot or. Go do something that I shouldn't, so I'm bringing it to you guys to see.
So I thought you were gonna tell us that that's where you got the rock for the High Point.
No, the, these are smaller rocks than that, so I, you know, I, obviously, it's in the right of way. Property owner's owned at the start of the roadway, he tells it's his property, and that's why he put him in the middle of the roadway, because it was his property. Sheriff commencing that he could not do that, but he put him right to the edge of the roadway, so.
They say remove them. It's a safety concern.
It's in the right of way.
Unless, if needs be, we'll call the sheriff to go up there with you while you remove them.
Yeah, we won't remove them without the sheriff department there, I know that.
Yeah, and, and when you say remove them, you mean move them, not, I mean, we're not gonna take his rock. We're gonna just move it out of the right of way, is that, I, have you ever done this before? Is this?
Not with a property owner that's irate, I guess you could say.
It's his property that he would claim has great value, probably.
I, I know when I talked to the sheriff before, when the, the, the debris, the, the logs or whatever was up close to the road. He really wasn't comfortable us going up there and just moving them away.
Right.
Uh, from the legal standpoint, so that's kind of why, if you, if you want to make the refer before you give the order to remove them. If you want to look into the legal standpoint.
If they're in the right of way, I, I don't understand what the.
I don't, I don't wanna start a war and then type of thing, that's why I'm kind of bringing it to you guys. I don't want to be.
Quest for notification of some kind, Joe, any initial thoughts?
That's my actual initial thought, is to notify him, he denies that it's his property, then it's abandoned at that point. To get rid of it, if he admits that it's his, then the sheriff then has notice that he intended to do this.
Okay, so I think we'll, we'll do the county attorney's office to, uh, to make sure we're giving proper.
And I figured that's proper.
But moving it, not removing it.
Or move them or however.
Yeah, I don't want to seize the property.
But these rocks were in the middle of the road and he wanted to keep the rocks, right? He put them in the middle of the road.
My understa-, I was not on site, but my understanding was the sheriff department had, was gonna have us remove them and take them away. Um, and we were going to go do that, then they called back and he decided to keep the rocks. But then Monday, I got the phone call from property owner that that's where he kept the rocks at, was next to the roadway, so.
Are we thinking that the fence and, and the wall kind of delineate the, the right of way?
Well, you get in more legal issues on that end of it. Uh, there's been court cases all over the place, some of the right of way you have from edge pavement to edge pavement. Other right of ways, we, uh, our right of way, assumed right of way, otherwise is sixteen and a half feet from the start of the roadway. Well, that hold up in a quarter of a wall, I would refer that on to legal. So, you know, this can get, and, and I think he's been in, I, Ron Cross is aware of this individual, so. He has dealings with this individual before, so I wouldn't want to go remove them today per se. I, I think you want to make sure you go through the legal route, make sure we're okay from that standpoint.
I agree.
Cause what do we do with the, the logs and, cause this is, a couple of months ago, we had them.
He made, one of the logs, he made the, I think there's a picture of the mailbox post.
Mailbox post, yeah.
And, and, you know, the mailbox, you can say the same thing about the mailbox. Um, I know in the past, there's been other individuals that have built mailboxes, you'll see in the side ditch. They build a mailbox out of, uh, bricks and they, you know, it's kind of in the roadway or whatever. I think what I've seen in the past is if somebody would hit that, go off the road and they hit that. Then that property owner could be liable because it's not a breakaway system. And it's in, kind of in the right of way area that they can actually, the property owner can be liable if somebody would hit it. So you could go back to the stance that if somebody would hit these rocks, this is a dead end road. Um, so it's not a main thoroughfare road or anything, but, you know, you could say, well, just put it back to. But if you hit it, then you need to take that person to court also, so it's kind of how, this individual's a little different of an individual to deal with.
He does have it lighted though, so.
That's on the mailbox though, I think. Light the mailbox.
It's lights on the, on the rocks too.
He lives in a gated community, gated off himself.
A community of one.
Okay, well, let's, thanks for bringing it to our attention, we'll, we'll, uh, the attorney and, and the sheriff's department.
I, I know Randy kind of wanted more backing before I would just go do some things and, and obviously, if this guy's come telling me to move the rocks. I'll, they'll move the rocks as long as they are there armed. I think this individual has pulled a gun before.
It is pretty close to the, to the roadway here.
Yeah, like I said, if it was on any other road, um, obviously, I would push them back, I wouldn't maybe take them away. But I would push them back off the roadway and so forth, but given this individual, I want to bring it to you guys to put in your.
Okay, we'll, we'll get back with you on it.
I'll let the property owner that called me let him know that we're, we're getting through the legal parts of it and things like that, just to get them as simple as it is. Uh, that's all I had, unless you have anything else.
Um, just to let you know that, that with respect to the tires out there at, uh, Salisbury and thirty five. I'm working with the city, uh, the mayor is planning to take that to the sanitary district board meeting. Uh, apparently, there's, I don't know if it's a, if it's a policy or a statute that requires them to take payment. For, uh, those tires going into the landfill, but he's gonna recommend to, to the board that they accept these tires. We'll, uh, let you know as soon as we have clearance to, for you to move them and take them out to the landfill.
He's aware that Community Corrections got a waiver many years ago.
He, he is aware, he is aware. Okay, uh, Brandon?
Had a lot going on this past month, um, I'll start off with, uh, Bridge seven twenty, on Bridge Avenue in Richmond. For our bridge replacement projects, um, on, uh, May thirty first, we had the, we had the CNR. Richmond Parks Highway and our consulting, uh, Jeff and I were in that meeting. Uh, it's kind of a delight that the Parks Department has, uh, entered into a land and water conservation funding. Federal grant that helps for parks and, for parks and stuff. And for that project, there, there is a kind of jog in the road, we're trying to straighten out that road. With the new bridge end, uh, kind of smooth transition through there and we need to acquire some right of way. Uh, by purchasing right of way from the project, um, it's gonna potentially affect the funding, the future funding of the park. Unless we do a, there's a couple of options we can do, conversions, basically, we're trading land of equal value. Not necessarily acreage, but in value, uh, in parks, um, small conversion can be done. Particularly, a large conversion can be done at any other park somewhere in the county. Um, depending on how much acres we need, depending on what conversion routes we go. They did offer a limited land use agreement with the parks, uh, for designated for just for the highway. But since we are, are, are using federal funds as well, we have to own the right of way. So I, I don't know if we can use the limited land use agreement in this case, so we may have to pursue the conversion. We're, we're in talks with Endo right now to see exactly which route we need to go, so I'll, I'll update you guys on that. But that has also sparked two other projects that we have, Bridge seven oh one on South Cheese Street and seven oh five, which is Richmond Avenue. Um, I'm not sure seven oh five, uh, is owned by the parks, but it's owned by the city of Richmond on the west side. So I don't know if, if that's included in the parks or not, but we're, we may have this issue there as well. Where, um, these are a little bit different, seven oh one and seven oh five. Where we don't necessarily need the right of way to do our project, but we are needing temporary access or permanent access to get under the bridge. Cause they are sometimes, so, um, and trying to acquire a permanent lease. Will also transfer property interest, which would fall into the conversion category as well. So we're trying to see, and, and they, Endo has initially told us to reach out to our county legal. To see what type of limited land use agreement we can come up with, with the parks. Um, and I don't know if that's the same thing as like an interlocal or, or something like that, but, uh, we're reaching out for all that. I think we'll listen to some stuff to the party on that, so, um, we're trying to move through that process as well. Going on to seven oh one, uh, Jeff, in front of you, I have the, the SBJCs. For the six parcels that are required access to get under the bridge. Whether it's a permanent leasement or a right of way purchase, uh, you have to offer compensation through the, uh, Endo State. Guide line, general guidelines, so those are those, um, offers that will remain to those property owners.
So there are how many? Six, did you say?
Six.
So one of them is for fifty six hundred dollars, the next one is forty one hundred dollars, then nineteen hundred dollars. Twenty five hundred.
You have appraisals for all six parcels?
Thirty two hundred and one thousand.
Should be a total of eighteen thousand three hundred dollars.
Move for approval of purchase of these six parcels?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pro same side, motion carries. So is there, do we need to sign these or?
Yes, this is the president's signature.
Looking for a, a line item, the one says the Indiana Department of Administration approval. Doesn't say anything that I can see about.
That would be the reviewer.
Good, so just sign it, yeah, thank you, all right, I can do that.
On seven oh one, we, last month, we issued a RFP for destruction area, destruction inspection. And that's this project's gonna go planning in January of next year, so we're kind of gearing up our, uh, inspection team on that. We went through the selection process and our selection team selected BLM, that project. So we will be reaching out to Endo for, uh, approval. See, Bridge seven sixteen, on Waterfall Road, was another one that is gonna involve the parks. Gonna need real parks right away for there. One question we did have on that specifically is right there by the waterfall. Um, the last owner on record is like nineteen oh six, early nineteen twenties. So it's currently not needed to anybody, um, so we don't know what the process is to, to either. Does it go to the county or does it go to the tax sale or how we require it right now?
How'd you like to pay the taxes on that since nineteen oh six, most penalties?
So I've reached out to Rob on that too. Uh, seven sixteen, which is on Sample Road, we did receive, um, three accepted offers out of four parcels affected. Um, we're just waiting on those to come in, issue checks, uh, to, to, to work with that. Last one was, uh, it was a part of a two-person trust, uh, one, one of the members is deceased. Additional paperwork on that certification trust to, to be able to transfer. They, they've already accepted, they just can't. Same thing with our Bridge one ninety one on Heidi Road, we've got three accepted offers, received those offers. We are in the process of cutting them checks, getting ones out through them. Last parcel is part of the, uh, the current SCAP camp has been drastically dissolved. There's some legal stuff we gotta work through for them to be able to accept the banking, so, uh, go through that. Just a couple in-house stuff, um, getting a lot of utility permits. Uh, another thing, we're working on the accounting side is they have a, um, state board of accounts has a different way. That we need to be accounting for our federal grants and our state community crossings grants. Than what we've been doing in the past, so I'm working with Mark on trying to fix that for this year.
Okay, um, might just add that, Brandon, and I assume Mike was in on this. But the information I got was, uh, your planning or your recommendation is to use all of the money. From the jail bond fund for bridge projects, is that correct? Okay, so I need from you, Mike, is, uh, your recommendation on how we spend those dollars? Cause Brandon's recommending bridge projects.
Yeah, we were gonna split the money.
Half and a half.
Is what we put in the budget.
Okay, so, uh, and.
I think it was in the budget, there was one for highway and one for bridge.
Okay, and that'll be a separate budget for the jail bond money, right?
Brandon gets the extra penny. No, you get the extra.
We are rest of.
Oh, Mike, Mike won the arm.
Do you want that to be televised?
Too late.
Mike got the penny, okay.
Okay, anything else?
Last week, uh, me and Mike went to the, it's a conference, which is the Indiana Association for County Engineers and Supervisors. And LTAP recognized the this year's road builders and master road builders for the county. These builders are honored in person at the self-conference. Road Scholar Program is designed to serve as a core, uh, knowledge-based, those activity involved in the Indiana Road Program provides attendees to foundational information on road care and allows opportunities for the network of peers and industry leaders. These participants attended twelve court courses, elective conferences, workshops to per credit hours. The road builder, uh, requires three, three hundred credit hours. And the title of master road builder is awarded once six hundred credit hours has been earned. So last week, uh, Mike Sharp once awarded the master road builders certification.
Great, congratulations. Okay. Kim.
Have a couple handouts that, while we're passing the handouts, I'll talk a little bit about the health fair that, um, just took place. I do not have an aggregate report yet, it'll come at the end of the month. I'll be meeting with our internal wellness council, we'll review the aggregate report, give some feedback, see what we, how we can make it better. I know one thing, I'll come next year with a full one, uh, help them. We get questions all the time, it just didn't take place this year because mostly because of the construction on this one, we're not, uh, behind schedule. I think all the employees were helped with that attendance with Mike Sharp and those, uh, reports, their flood reports were coming back. It seemed like within less than an hour of November happened, it was, it was really quick. So for me, we've been having the health fair since two thousand and seven. Yes, it was smaller, but it for us, uh, the council, it's their first health fair, but for HRs, we're in the smoothest health fair set we've had. So we were really pleased with that.
And I will add to that, if you did not make the health fair and went out to read to have it, they opened it up for that week. I did that, it was seamless, it was in there a total fifteen minutes, had my results back in probably an hour.
So I know, I'm pretty confident we're over a hundred and seventy-five, I have no idea what the county is out at occupational medicine, so we'll, we'll find all of that out. If you do have your employees asking about the, thank you, the, uh, the fifty dollar world bucks they're getting for participating, that cannot happen until we receive the master billing, conduct the audit on it, and then get it done. And then deposits will be made into HRAs or HSAs, whatever the employee has set up. That's gonna take a little bit of time, I guess, will be July, because we're not even getting the aggregate report until the end of June. So if you have employees asking that. The other day I wanted to remind you, I sent out an email in regards to SWIFT MD, and that's for the telemedicine and for the behavioral health. I'm not getting back as many, we have to kind of have an open involvement for the individuals who are not in the county, enrolled in the county health insurance and also for our part-time individuals. So I'm really not getting a lot back, I'm gonna send another email out. Friday is kind of not, it's not a hard cutoff, but we gotta set a date because this has to be loaded into done, has to be loaded into SWIFT MD and then prepare for the financial side of payment on us. So we had to set the deadline. So please, um, reach out to your part-time employees if you know full-time not under the insurance. And like for Mike, on your seasonal, you're a little bit different, your seasonal are here for six months, they're part of this. So if you wanna get your seasonal to sign up for, uh, they will be part of it. So just a really quick reminder, the SWIFT MD we've had since twenty seventeen, and that is where an individual or their dependents who would be eligible for health insurance, living in the household or maybe away at college, but their dependents, qualified dependents, are able to have, uh, take place with the telemedicine, it's twenty-four seven, you're actually talking to an actual physician who can prescribe medication if they deem necessary or if you want to urgent care, but you are. So that's been in place for quite a while. The new part of this is just a lot of talk out in the world and it's needed, it's the behavioral health. And the commissioners and council graciously, uh, approved to add this. And again, it's for everybody, the county's paying for this, not the employees. And so that's gonna be a twenty-four seven, uh, four counseling sessions per incident. Again, it also would include those dependents. Now, if an individual feels like that they need more than four counseling sessions or they're recommended to have that, then they can contact New Avenue. We still have New Avenue's Employees Assistance Program, that's four more visits. So they could get up if they qualify up to eight free visits on this. And under their insurance, they would have two more, so we're talking ten sessions here for behavioral health. That's a lot, and it, it's a great fringe benefit that the county's offering the employees. So, so I do ask you to please encourage your employees to fill out if they're qual, well, if they're not already signed up under SWIFT MD, to get that to us right away, I appreciate it. So are there any questions or comments about even SWIFT MD or any of the other benefits? Nope. Okay. That's all I have.
All right, any, any questions at all for Kim? Okay, if not, Steve, anything? Okay. Mark, anything you wanna share with the group?
Yeah. The office is gonna have a, um, seminar in this room on, uh, the June twentieth at two P M. It's a financial workshop, it'll give us an opportunity to give the office holders and whoever does their bookkeeping, how, what we need from them to properly pay claims, uh, budget procedures, credit card usage, grant requirements, we're just gonna hit everything at the same time. And, uh, hopefully we'll come away with, uh, a better understanding of how county funds are gonna be spent under my administration.
Any questions for Mark on that? Did you all get the email about that? And so they can, they can bring along whoever they think from their office needs to hear it.
More the merrier.
How long will it last? Do you have any idea how long of a session that'll be, Mark?
Well, depending on questions, I don't know. I hope that it can be a really thorough discussion of those items I just mentioned and how they come into my office. The, um, time-wise, I can't tell you, don't know.
But if you're gonna present information through a PowerPoint or presentation or something, so at least an hour for that and then, and then questions.
Handouts so that they can take them and have reference to them. I'm guessing the presentation may be forty-five-ish minutes, you know, and then time for whatever, we're allowing two hours, but I don't see it lasting too long.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions? If not, uh, I will ask you all a question as department heads. How many of your departments, uh, do you performance appraisals currently for your employees? Two, three, okay. Okay. I was talking to Kim the other day about, uh, whether, whether we should make that a requirement. I'll be talking to the other commissioners in the next few days. When you do those, those appraisals, do you, uh, share copies with the Human Resources Office? No, okay. We'll be having conversation and we'll see if we, if we decide to proceed, we'll, we'll communicate with you. I, if, if we do this, I would think we'd want to try to kind of standardize a format. So we'll ask you for your opinion on what you do, what instrument you use, how you go about that. And, uh, of course, we would provide training, uh, through the Human Resources Office, but again, we're far piece from, from that. But since I had you here, I wanted to ask that question, so thank you. Anything else at all? Brad?
Not married, I'm good.
All right.
It's not a job, I'm just letting you know Haley does have her creative block.
She told me. All right, I think we'll, uh, we'll close the, uh, department head meeting. Thank you for being here, appreciate it. Keep up the good work. Mike, again, congratulations, master road builder, is that what it's called?
Does that qualify you to move those rocks?
She get a road crown and a scepter.
It's what we're doing it with the County Fire Association meeting at seven.
At the fairgrounds, all right.
No, here.
Six hundred hours is a lot.
I don't know, I'm gonna go to us.
I think Alan's gonna be there.
I know.
That's okay, no, but I get.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So this is.
No, it's, it's a long discussion, uh, we've got questions about.
I'm not sure a road scholar in Richmond has six hundred hours of classroom.
All right, you're welcome to stay if you would like, but, uh, if not, we're gonna go ahead with our meeting. Let's take a, let's take a quick break and we'll, we'll come back in about five minutes. All right, we're ready. Steve.
All right, you have your project list in front of you and, uh, starting out with the courthouse exterior. And they're moving, uh, seems to be moving a little more rapidly than they have in weeks past. Little hiccup come this week, um, Endot showed up Monday and indicated that they're going to, uh, grind and pave Third Street starting, starting this week. So we had to move the, uh, workers' trailers and their dumpster that they've had, uh, over into our, uh, health lot, parking lot. The, uh, NX generator recall last week that the council did approve that funding and so we have notified the, uh, engineering for our project to, to prepare the contract. And so that'll be coming back for Ron's review and eventually shows up to your desk for, uh, signature. In the chambers here, uh, I know we had quite a bit of discussion about the sound system last week. Joe was here this morning, you can tell it's on, working this morning. There's still a piece of equipment that he has to install, uh, he's indicated that is here and he is programming that and will be here tomorrow and Friday to, to install that. And for lack of a better description, it's some sort of distribution piece of equipment that, uh, finishes up making all the connections.
And you just need to make sure that Craig's folks have access to all the information about how to run the sound system and also the lighting.
Yep.
Right?
Yep. I thought they were born with that knowledge.
I think they make it up.
Well, I, I understand that, hearing his presentation earlier, all that gibberish.
Gibberish.
Some of those words, I, they, some of those words mean something to him.
They're not in any dictionary that I'm aware of.
They huddle in the dark.
Yeah, that's right. Uh, item number twenty-six, the fairground website, uh, as Craig mentioned, Haley has the programming software that she needs to, uh, make her website presentation and, and brochures. And she has sent out, uh, some sampling information of a branding, uh, identification and some fonts and so on and so forth to the committee. They'll look at that and eventually that'll come to you folks. She is meeting with Ed Delapaz today, uh, on the website so that all that can be turned over to her. And, uh, hopefully we'll have a prototype for you folks to look at in a couple of weeks.
And as, I'm sorry, as a side note, I'm, this girl is sharp. She wanted to take over this website, I mean, she, and she hit the, she was saying stuff that we're like, yeah, I, okay, sure. I mean, she definitely knows what she's doing.
She seems very confident and. We're ready to hand it off to her.
Yeah, and she, she wants it, I mean, she wants control of that stuff.
And, you know, I felt that, you know, had we had kind of an amateur start to the website before we actually got this person on board, it would all have to have been done over, you know? And I, I really feel that, you know, her, her taking this stuff from the ground up is a far better way to go.
Well, I, I think she's knowledgeable enough.
Right.
The product that we end up.
And let her own it, let her do it, and, uh, I, I, I'm so glad she's on board.
She can.
Worth the wait.
Yep. And then, uh, item number thirty-three, the EMA ramp that goes down into the EMA area is scheduled to be started on August fourteenth. I've checked that with, uh, Matthew because that's about a four-day project. Once they grind it, put on the first coat, the epoxy has to set up, so they'll have to use the outside entrance for about that whole week.
But is, um, June twenty-second won't be a problem?
No, it's August, August fourteenth. August fourteenth is when this starts, yeah.
Okay, so his, his meeting is in the clear, okay.
And then, uh, item number thirty-four, the support post for a couple of the buildings out to fairgrounds, that project has been completed. And then on number thirty-eight, uh, I sent out an email this morning, if you may have seen it, you may have not have seen it, but we had, uh, one of the projects at the fairgrounds is the HVAC project for the Coleman Center. Uh, that moved up to the top of the list very rapidly when the, uh, Coleman office area HVAC system failed yesterday afternoon about four o'clock. Uh, we did have a contractor look at it right away, um, a compressor has failed. He sent me some cost estimates to replace the compressors, about sixteen, or about ten thousand, uh, six hundred dollars to replace the entire unit, which is what was originally on the project list, is about thirty-nine, a little less than forty thousand dollars. Uh, I've talked to him, talked to the contractor, the other two units, there's two units that serve the big hall and then there's one unit that serves the office areas. They're all the same tonnage, same make, just a different model number, but they're all gonna be about the same price. So I've sent out an email and I've copied you on it to council, uh, cause I'd like to get the, get these ordered today, uh, before the day's out because there's about a five-day, they're actually in stock in, in Texas, which is kind of unusual in itself, that, uh, so these are pretty standard units. Uh, I've heard back from two council members already that they, they concur with it. One, one council member's out of town, so I anticipate before noon I'll have, uh, and, and Beth Leisure did text me and all she's interested in is getting four confirmations and then we'll formalize this at, at the council workshop next week. But my, my recommendation to you folks is, is that we replace, go ahead and replace those three units.
I responded back to you.
And from the perspective of our purchasing policy.
Yep.
This is an emergency.
Yep.
And, and the other two units, I think we can, for compatibility sake, we can say that they need to all be the same.
Correct, and these will almost be a plug and play, if you will, because they're the same make and model and tonnage. Yeah, all they have to do is, well, I say all, but they disconnect it, lift it up, put the new one in and it hooks up to the same plenum and everything, yeah.
So, uh, do we wanna go ahead and, and give him approval to, to, um, order the units?
I move that you immediately order the units, uh.
Based upon council's approval.
Well, sure, that's subject to council approval for the thirty-nine thousand dollar unit. And to even expedite shipping?
I'll tell him that, and I.
Because of the fair, uh, next week? Because of the fair next week?
Now, the, the big hall will still be air-conditioned.
Oh, okay.
It, it still works.
But there's a lot of traffic in and out of the office too.
I know, but if we leave the doors open to the, to the big hall, it should take the edge off at least. Hopefully it won't be as hot, it hasn't been recently.
I second the motion.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, both same side.
That's all I have on the current list, unless you have some questions.
It's fortuitous it was in stock.
Oh, isn't it? Cause it could have been twelve weeks in shipping.
That's what I, and in fact, over the night I was thinking, and now what am I gonna suggest to the commissioners because, you know, if it was gonna be months out, I would've said, go ahead and put the compressor in, but this is gonna work out, it seems like.
Oh, that's wonderful.
So, and then next on my list, the deed sale properties, the issue that we thought would come to fruition, has come to fruition, we've gotten a notice from the city on three of the properties now that, of weeds and, and grass. And again, these are at our names. Jeff, I know you had some conversation.
I talked to the mayor and I, I explained, as soon as this happened, I explained that we own the properties, we recognize there's gonna be some, some grass and weed issues and can you work with us, keep us posted? So they told us right away when they started getting complaints, remember that the city's the one that's gonna get complaints, so we need to do what we can. So talk to Steve about the possibility of sending a crew out or trying to hire somebody to keep the weeds down as it, as it comes up.
And as we speak right now, I'm not ready to commit either way to that, I've got someone from the building commission office going out and taking some photographs of all these properties so that hopefully you can see what they look like before the day's out. The problem with, you know, us doing it with our equipment is that a lot of these properties, they're full of debris anyway, or they've got a garage that's collapsed and they're not just like going on and mowing a lawn. And so let's, let's see what we're up against when we get the photographs back, but it's gonna be a.
Fortunately, we have a bunch of dumpsters on our property that we can utilize.
Well, this is gonna be a, this is gonna be a, not an easy one for us to.
No.
We'll just have to work through.
I think we have to contract it out and build Dr. Tanner.
Yep. Before you leave, Christine Stinson, coming to me Friday, and we had talked to her about, you know, as, as they hire more people, the two on the grant and then any from the, from the new funding from the state, that we could move the, could move the inspectors over here to this building. She didn't wanna do that, she wanted to reconfigure how they, how they were set up in their building. Friday she came to me and said, we won't have enough space, I wanna, I wanna move the inspectors over here. So I said, well, I wondered how long it would be before you came to that conclusion. At any rate, one of the questions is, can they stay on the same phone system that, that the health department is on if they move into the downstairs here?
That'd be a good question. Yeah. You know, they're on their own fiber switch.
Exactly.
That is just there.
So think that through, you don't have things.
I do believe we have more fiber that runs around all the buildings, so I think we could probably light one up, connect it to that, bring it over here.
Okay.
But yeah, we'll brainstorm it and see what we can.
See what you can come up with, cause that was, that was one of her first questions.
Okay.
And I, and I assume the same question for their computers.
Yeah, with their computers, you know, we would just have them on the, on our network, we have round statements that get.
Goes back and forth, okay.
So.
All right. So we'll be working with, with Christine to figure out logistics.
Do you know where they're, they might?
In the, the old extension office, and that's really the only.
Right, the only place.
And it would be, it would be just six workstations in that, in that area.
For now.
Okay, yeah.
That could accommodate more than six.
It can, but that's what she wants for now.
Okay. Yeah, let me look, cause you know, if nothing else, if it, if it doesn't come to the basement, if it comes to the basement, then we should be able to run up because there should be, there's one that goes to the glass room and the auditor, there's a fiber switch there. So we should be able to piggyback off that as long as it goes to the health department.
Okay. Thank you.
And then could I just follow up on one, one comment you made this morning? What were the electrical quotes for? You said you had Cummins Electric in.
Yeah, so it's the, basically given a quote for the rewire of the building, so it would be three drops of CAT six per workstation.
Okay, not electric, not the electrical system.
No, not, not, Cummin, Cummins Electric, just they, they run.
Got you, okay. It's the IT.
Right, it's, it's the IT, that would.
When you, when you, when you made the comments, you're gonna rewire the courthouse, I'm thinking.
No, I don't wanna take that on.
Okay, so you didn't use any computer jargon when you were talking about it, you said electrical.
I could've said CAT six, I could've said.
Yeah.
Makeup, whatever you want.
So.
What did you say there, he goes again.
I'm a little relieved.
Can't let this guy out for a minute.
That's right. Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks, yeah. Steve, anything else?
I do, and then I have the, the cleaning service that we've used for this building for a couple of years, I've terminated that contract because of an issue that we had arise in one of the offices and so I've got a couple of quotes to replace that service. The first one is from, it's a cleaning service, both of them are from here in Richmond, Real Comm Cleaning Services here in Richmond, they have quoted seven hundred and eighty-five dollars per week. And then the second one is J-CAD, which is five hundred and fifty dollars a week, and J-CAD was the one that we used prior to this one, the reason why we switched its time because the guy retired and.
So he's back in business now.
And he's, he's discovered that.
And you were, you were pleased with how.
Yeah, and, and that will be my recommendation.
And they have the low bid, so.
Yeah, and it, it's within the budget that we currently have, so.
Okay.
My recommendation is, is to approve J-CAD.
So moved.
Motion, second, further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, both same side.
And that's all I have for now.
Okay. Sir, we have about five minutes until our public hearing at eleven, does that give you enough time to share with us whatever you have to share?
Probably so.
Okay, well, come on up to the table if you would then and just hear what you have to say.
All right.
And I apologize, what was your name again, sir?
Rod Blanchford.
Rod Blanchford.
I sent you something recently.
Okay.
About SB four or SE eight four. And that's, I've been very concerned with that bill ever since it came up, of the state becoming, telling, dictating what we can do. There's a lot of good things in there for us, as far as money, we need it, we're like a starving man and they're offering us a meal and we need it, we want it, but I'm afraid of the controls that come with it. And the fact that a third of that money is coming from the CDC is very concerning to me, that they will be dictating what we do, especially in an emergency. They say contact, contact tracing, we will have to do it because it's in there, their, their money is being used by us. I don't know if you've said yes to it, it sounds like you have.
We have not.
We have not.
I see.
At this point.
People are kinda talking about hiring new people and all that, maybe that's gonna happen.
The health department is, is working on developing a plan for what they would do if we accept the money.
I, I, I went through the minutes and I couldn't find that you actually decided, but you haven't decided by July first?
By September first.
Ah, so you have time. I haven't, someone, I, see, I don't, I'm not privy to all this.
Sure.
Or maybe I just haven't looked in the right places, talked to the right people. But anyway, I'm here. I, I would, I, I, I sent you a, kind of a pledge that you would, if, if you do go ahead with it, that you, well, I mentioned all these things on the pledge, I, I don't read them now, cause I don't have two minutes or something, but I think it is very important to study that bill, the amended bill, top to bottom, and think about the ways that it could be used to bind us, because I don't, I don't want it that we can't make our own decisions. I know they have a provision in there saying, this doesn't mean the counties don't have any freedom to make their own decisions, but that's a little kind of a, to me, a weak statement. I don't know, as a force of law, what does that mean?
Well, I, I will tell you this, we're, we're working with the health department to put together a plan. I have talked to Dr. Brad Barrett, who is our state representative.
Right, and I've talked to him about.
The bill.
And he knows.
He knows the content backwards and forwards, he knows the legislative intent, he has agreed to review the plan and, and give his input and share with us whether or not the proposed plan meets with the legislative intent. So we're not going into this with a blindfold on, we're gonna, we're gonna discover everything there is to discover and develop a plan. I will tell you that I personally am predisposed to, if we can come up with a, a plan that makes sense to me, to approve this, I, I also tell you that I have no interest in signing a pledge, I'm an elected official who is committed to serving the people of Wayne County and I, I think pledges like that only bind people to, to.
I think, I understand that. I think, you know, I, I think, I personally think that it wouldn't be any, it should be no problem to, to commit to that, but to these things, cause they're pretty raw, they're pretty non-biased, but.
And subject to interpretation.
Well, that's.
I mean, you have the option of opting out, should we be.
Anytime, cause if we opt in and things go a way that, that we didn't anticipate and don't want to go, we can opt out the next day.
That, that I think precludes the need for a pledge because we are not enslaved to an agreement that maybe is agreed to by September one of this year.
There's no period of time that we're signing on for.
Right.
And so, at any rate, I apologize, but we're, we're at eleven o'clock now, so we'll need to.
Well, next time, I, the last time I spoke here, I just came and they let me speak and I thought that's how you did it.
And, and we did again.
So.
I just, we have a, a hearing that's scheduled for eleven o'clock.
Okay, I don't wanna keep it away.
If you wanna, if you wanna wait and talk more later, we can, but that's, that's up to you.
Maybe I will, I don't know.
All right, thank you, appreciate your.
Thanks, Rod.
Okay, it's eleven o'clock by the official chronometer there on the wall. So Laura, what, how do we start this? Do we need to, to approve, proof of publication or anything for the, okay, you've got that there?
We have proper proof of publication for today's hearing, it was advertised properly in the Western Wayne News and the original Canadian item, it's here right here.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve proof of publication?
Move for approval, proof of publication.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. All right, so let's call this, this hearing to order. We'll start with giving us an introduction on, on what the hearing is about.
Well, your hearing is concerning a proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero five, it's based on a request, it was a petition before the Advisory Plan Commission, and it was heard by the Advisory Plan Commission on May eighteenth, and it was certified, they reviewed it as a request of a zone district classification from A-one agricultural to C-two community business, business district in order to allow a general retail store on a proposed two-acre parcel to be split from a nine point two three eight acre parcel in part of the southwest quarter, section twelve, township seventeen north, range fourteen east, in New Garden Township. Said proposed two-acre parcel being located at the northwest corner of North US Highway twenty-seven and Williams Road. The area is A-one agricultural for a number of miles in both directions at this location. And as you know, the Plan Commission has determined unfavorable recommendation on this request of zone district classification change.
And what was the vote on that?
It was, it was five to zero.
Thank you. What was their, what was Plan Commission's concerns to make the unfavorable recommendation?
There were a couple of issues that were discussed, both out of the comprehensive plan, one of those that retail will support the community needs for goods and services in concentrated locations. The proposed zoning change would be putting a retail business in an area where there was no other retail business in close proximity, now there is, this property is just south of Fountain City, right across from, or just a little bit southwest of Northeastern Schools, but it'll be the only retail business there. Also from the comprehensive plan, commercial land use policies should be reviewed, further development of new commercial land perpetuates the cycle of abandoning existing vacant commercial properties. Now, we don't know conclusively if there is available property within Fountain City's city limits that would be suitable for this particular business, but that is a concern there, but also going back to the first one where we're trying to keep goods, businesses of this kind in a concentrated area. And I just have them pop up. The board also considered the, the appeals from the, please, or we would call it, from people who came to speak out against the proposed change, they were primarily concerned about the increased traffic turning onto an area where there's not a turn lane, currently onto a road that isn't really suitable for heavier traffic. The company that is helping to develop this property that comes to be indicated that they would make improvements on the, on the county road, but of course, the state highway, US highway, that's out of their purview on there. So those are the primary things that the board discussed when we were reviewing the application.
I have a question, so if, could this be given under A-one a special use provision?
The petitioner was aware that they could file a variance of use, go before the Board of Zoning Appeals, a different board for a variance of use, but it was not something they wanted to pursue at that time.
They didn't want to pursue that.
I did make that aware, make them aware of that.
I went to decide to, you know, actually have eyes on the traffic patterns, the speeds, the proximity to the school, et cetera, and one of the concerns that came to my mind is that there are no sidewalks between Northeastern and the proposed site for this retail business. Does the developer plan to build sidewalks on their property on the west side of US twenty-seven? Because I could imagine this would attract foot traffic from Northeastern School, but without sidewalks on the west side of US twenty-seven, it would, I think, imperil the foot traffic that would come on that US highway.
If I could supplement my earlier comments, that also was a concern that the audience made, people trying to cross a busy highway and then again, no convenient way to get down to the site, it's just not right across the road, you'd have to go across and down, maybe a hundred yards or so. You'd have to go across and down, uh, maybe a hundred yards or so, uh, to get to the site of the.
So there would be no predictable location where foot traffic would cross a highway. They could cross in a fifty-five mile an hour, um, uh, speed zone. But as I observed this, uh, school was not in session, but, um, I did not have a radar gun, but I, uh, was confident that traffic from the south especially was traveling well above fifty-five miles an hour. But what was even more worse than was the sweeping turn that, uh, uh, occurs prior to the intersection with Williams Road. So the, uh, visibility of, uh, pedestrian traffic, uh, uh, near Williams Road, should that, uh, foot traffic, um, attempt to cross, uh, south of Northeastern, uh, would not be highly visible to a motorist traveling well in excess of fifty-five miles an hour. So I'll admit, I did come away very concerned about the safety concerns should this be approved.
Let's, uh, let's move on. If there are no further questions, let's move on to public comments. So is there anyone here who is, uh, who wants to make, uh, comments in favor of the proposed project? If there is, if you would come forward to the table, please. State your name and address.
Jack Baker, seventy-three forty-six North US twenty-seven.
Is this your property that's being questioned, Mr. Barrett?
Yes, it is. As far as concerning this company wanting to build in Fountain City, they approached me in two thousand sixteen. We had done everything but start this process, and they come back to me and said, we're holding up, we're gonna try to buy property in Fountain City. That has been done. I mean, this is in two thousand sixteen, of course, COVID hit, and I'd done forgot about it really. That's the short and sweet of that. I've also, uh, my daughter's got Girl Scout troop cheerleaders and added to Northeastern School, and I attend functions over there. I hear numerous of times when things are over, people saying, I have to go to Myers, buy groceries, or I have to go to Fountain City. They don't go north, they don't go south, they go eastern, they go west. So I see that being a good thing for the parents of the school system. It's not gonna really be a good thing for kids trying to cross the streets. I get that. And some of the neighbors are gonna be upset, you know? That's, that's just the way that part of it is. Traffic safety would be my biggest concern. I live second place north. It's hard to get in and out of school. When school's in, there's a couple of other places living up the road. Fountain Acres says they don't see where that's gonna bother them a bit. The neighbors that just built a new home right next to it says, good. It's that, that much less traveling they do. I don't know if anybody else has got anything to say, but I just wanted to let you know that this has been ongoing since two thousand sixteen. Whether you approve it or deny it, it doesn't really matter to me. I forgot about it in two thousand sixteen, you know? But I've watched over the years, and I've worked construction all my life. It's just a matter of time. Where somebody wants to spend their money, they'll get, they'll build that road in there. They'll, they'll do whatever indot wants. And that's gonna happen somewhere up through there, so. I just built way back off the road when I built my place to get ready for it. So I'll be unaffected. That's about all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak in favor of the project? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the project? Come on up and have a seat. State your name and address, please.
Name of John Martin, seventy-six thirty-three US twenty-seven north. I'm right across from where you put the doghouse. But it's, it's getting to the point that the, uh, traffic congestion, if we're gonna rezone that, you know, I'm not totally opposed to development going on. But I own the land on the other side of the road, on the south side of Williams Road. So if we're gonna rezone that commercial, you might as well go ahead and start rezoning the rest of it, tear up the farmland. It's no longer a farming community. We can't even hardly get around now with the army store, with the dog camp, the dog kennel across the road. We can't even get in and out of our driveway now. You add a lot more traffic back to that, and I'm not opposed to development. Either you wanna make it a commercial area or leave it a farming area.
All right.
I don't, I don't blame them for trying to sell it for big bucks, but the taxes, taxes for going up on farmland that, uh, puts you in a hard place. I'm concerned about drainage also, that the drainage on that thing goes straight west and then back across to the south side of our property. There'll be some drainage problems coming up in the future.
All right. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Martin. Anyone else want to speak in opposition to the project? Okay. Looks like there are no other public comments. Steve, give me a little direction here.
You know, I think, uh, from my perspective, the, this is spot zoning. And it's a very small lot to zone commercial, and it wouldn't be just available to the business that wants to go there. It'd be open to everything that, uh, is in the C-two zone district.
So once you change the zoning,
Yeah.
any, any qualifying business could go into that. If, if, if something comes in and, uh, closes within a year, it's still zoned, right, for commercial business?
And Mr. Duenger brought up the point that they have available to them a, a variance of use opportunity.
Going through the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Which then allows the Board of Zoning Appeals to tailor make that particular use for that particular property. They can add conditions to the variance as far as, you know, traffic con- control, parking, et cetera, et cetera.
Sidewalks, bumper strip, anything that, to me, that seems like a, a much better option.
And it would be my recommendation that you certainly follow what the Plan Commission has suggested, and that is to deny changing the zoning business.
I too have real concerns about, I'll, I'll call it spot zoning, whether it really meets that definition or not. I'm not positive, but to, to pick a small parcel at any location in the county, um, and change the zoning significantly as opposed to what the, the Comprehensive Plan calls for of trying to, uh, move light uses together, uh, just doesn't make sense to me. Uh, and in this particular issue, in this location, I think there are concerns about, as Mary Ann pointed out, kids crossing, uh, a highway to get to a, you know, some kind of business. Uh, I, I just don't think it, it makes sense to do it this way. Mary Ann or Brad, further comments?
You know, I, I never want to inhibit a landowner from doing what they want with their property. If they want to sell it to whatever, fine. I'm completely with that. I think we've given an option to do the variance, um, to allow this to happen. I have real concerns about the traffic with the youth there. I mean, that road is busy anyway. But if BZA decides to put some restrictions and do stuff and do a special variance, I'm all behind it. But to, to do a spot zoning change, I, I think I'm a little bit, uh, apprehensive of, of approving that because of that reason and the traffic concerns and safety. I'd hate to see, um, some kid get injured or killed.
Right, trying to cross.
Cross the street or, it's gonna increase the traffic there, and somebody, if somebody, it's a two-lane highway. If somebody's trying to turn left and somebody's rushing to get to school or something, they don't see a stop, you know, the turn signal, you have a rear-end accident. I mean, there's, there's no turn lane there. It's, it's, it's waiting for disaster, I think, so.
And I agree with you. I'm, generally speaking, uh, I support property rights. But I think, you know, the zoning issues take precedence, that property rights within, uh, the zoning that, that you have on, on your property.
And I think part of our, our responsibilities as Commissioner is public safety.
Absolutely.
And this really crosses into that public safety issue. If, you know, we had some studies from indot saying, yes, you know, we've had a turn lane there, it could be done safely. We don't, as far as I know. To make a more informed decision to change the zoning, but I, 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 I would tend to say, I think they need to pursue the, the special use zoning.
Or Fountain City, where it's already zoned and would, uh, that, that, there are other options inside Fountain City that could be perhaps less, um, troublesome for them. I, I, I would, I think, still be opposed to a special use, uh, at that location from the public safety standpoint, uh, after watching the speed that goes at that intersection of Williams and US twenty-seven.
It's a busy highway.
And I think this is one of the reasons why we do often have tough decisions where zoning interferes with, I think all of us, uh, do respect property rights, and it's, um, uh, that quandary between respect for property rights and public safety, which is my primary objection. For these and other reasons, I move that we accept the recommendation, um, of the, of Advisory Plan Commission to reject the application for the zoning change.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll skip that motion.
Before we take a vote, any further comments from the Plan Commission or?
I have none.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I think that the work of this, uh, public hearing is completed. We have a motion to close the public hearing.
Someone?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. The hearing is closed. Thank you all for your participation. And Laura, thank you for your presentation. Appreciate, appreciate the work of the Plan Commission. Thank you. Okay. Let's, uh, let's go to the, uh, claims.
Move for approval of payroll dated June sixteenth. Also, for perf and federal tax, voluntary retirement payments. Also done flex and garnishments. Also, regular claims and guardian ad litem in CASA. Also, veterans claim transportation. Also, a center point energy claim that stands alone. Unexplained why that is the case. Also, an LIT economic development claim, EDC, and a center point claim for buildings and grounds. Move for approval of all of the above.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the claims presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries.
I also would like to move for approval of Commissioner Minutes dated June seventh. Minor.
I suppose.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the June seventh Minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. All right. A few more minutes. Bobby, do you have other issues? I've got a stack, but I think I'll take care of these after the, uh, after the afternoon session.
No, I think, I don't have anything.
Okay, Steve?
Nope.
Anything else? Joe? All right, sir? Oh, you've got other comments? Come on back. Apologize, we're gonna sign these, uh, these claims while you're, while you're talking.
Multitasking is okay.
Go right ahead.
I, I, I don't know if there's a whole lot more I would say here. It's, I, I kind of understand not wanting to debound pledges, but I hope you consider the ideas presented in the Middle East seriously. I, I know a lot of, there are a lot of citizens in our county who are concerned about overreach by health officials. Twenty-five percent of the Republican people voted for another candidate, that's Brad Barrett. Even though I like Brad Barrett, I campaigned for him, so I'm not against him. I just see things a little differently, and he has, uh, expertise in areas I have none. So I, and I respect that. That's, it's not about him or anything like that. And I am concerned that we're kind of slow-walking ourselves into a, uh, being controlled on, on a, giving up our own power to make decisions within our own county. And I don't want to see that happen. And I've seen it happen in other places. I spoke before the Legislature, uh, this, this year about this bill. And I cited, I did a little study on my own on the ten healthiest states in the United States. And, uh, four of them had a state, a top-down state-controlled system, and six of them didn't. And, uh, there were a lot of factors that went into a healthy state, but the biggest factor was high income. That was the big determiner, not what the state was regulating or telling you to do. Some of those states with top-down also had pretty wealthy populations. Or they had things going on in them like, uh, like the, Utah has the Mormons, and people don't smoke and drink. And so that was a big factor there. So I'm just saying, uh, I think we ought to be really careful about binding ourselves to anything. And you can, as, you know, you make the point, we can always opt out, but the other flip of that is you could always opt in. You know, you can see how it's working out other places. Be careful and cautious. But, uh, I just think we ought to not be too dazzled by all the, the good things that would come with that money. I like what they do, the, the trauma ideas are great. We need that. I, I don't deny any of that. I just don't want, as a cancer survivor, someone who's, I, I survived stage four bladder cancer, which most people die when they get to that point. I did a whole bunch of natural things. I got help from a naturopath, got vitamin C infusions, did all kinds of things. Did a lot of things on my own. The FDA is trying to ban that. And the FDA, the CDC, they're both beholden. They get their, a lot of their money from the, from the pharmaceutical companies. There's, there are moves to do this sort of thing. I don't want us to get bound into things that are beyond our control. That's my big concern. Forget about pledges. I'm not gonna make an issue like that.
Thank you.
Well, Rod, I, 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 I understand your concerns, and I have those too, and that was my biggest thing, why I didn't want to opt in yet and still research. still research. I spoke to Representative Barrett. I voiced my concerns to him also about overreach with the Health Department. I spoke, spoken to both our commissioners, and I I know for sure that Jeff Noe understands my concerns with restricting overreach from the Health Department and so you can rest assured that, at least with me, I will do everything on my behalf to make sure that they don't have an overreach. But we do have a health epidemic, especially in Wayne County. If they just released some numbers last week. I think we're listed like seventy-eighth out of ninety-two counties as the unhealthiest.
We're frequently unhealthier than that.
Yeah, I mean, so we're we're we're, we have bad numbers across the board. So this money's gonna come well-needed and benefited to the citizens of Wayne County, but we have to, I agree with you, we have to really, really, really make sure that it's not an overreach. For example, like the, in the past, and when I was campaigning, the the well testing, you know, they wanted to make it mandatory for and and have permits for all that. I was completely against that. Uh, it was a complete overreach of of the Health Department.
I'll just say, we killed that before. Before you got here.
But during COVID, we did see a lot of stuff that was being said and done by some members of our council and commissioners that I didn't agree with. So I understand a lot of these concerns have risen because of COVID and things that were done.
That's right.
And the legislature has taken some steps, so the the commissioners now have the authority to overrule the the Health Board on certain emergency processes that they might want to put in place. We we can stop that.
And we did. There was a time in twenty twenty when the Health Department overstepped what the commissioners felt they should. And as an illustration, they required that only one individual could be on a golf cart on a golf course, and that included husband and wife, which we felt was an overstepping public health, uh, heavy-handed move. So we worked with them and said, this is an overstepping public health rule and and got it turned around. And, you know, there granted, we did have the authority to um turn them around, but it was just a matter of getting common sense to the table. But during twenty twenty and early twenty twenty-one, the fatality rate in Wayne County was so very high that masking did help. And I know there were people that felt we overstepped by.
And I would agree with that. I think it was an overstep, and I'll speak publicly if that's the safe. I was not approved for the mandate masking.
But masking, we are confident, did help reduce the spread. But some of the other Health Department points of view, we were able to reason them down to a more libertarian point of view.
Anything else that you wanna bring to the table?
It's, I I, you get my basic.
Absolutely.
Take your life up here.
Well, I appreciate you coming in. I did see the email, uh, and I've shared with you my thoughts. But I think that the most important thing we can focus on over the summer is to work with the the Health Department to put together a plan that makes sense to them and to us.
Will you make it, will you publicize it?
The plan?
The plan.
Absolutely.
I don't know. Some kind of meeting to say, here's our plan, we want the community to know what this is, and we wanna hear what you think of it.
We we will work through that, yes.
Okay, okay.
All right. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, uh, let's uh, let's go ahead and recess. Remember, we're gonna recess until two o'clock. The Drainage Board will meet at two o'clock. And then Valerie Schaefer at two thirty, then we'll pick up the additional items here that that we need to uh, need to discuss.
Can we discuss your meeting up between now and make sure we're in agreement on our position regarding the purchase of two vehicles versus one?
Talked to both of you and you both have said that that.
We we should do that in a public session. It's my feeling that one bear cat is sufficient in Wayne County. And that we could enter into a, their local agreement with the city of Richmond. Very rarely is there a need for an armored vehicle of the type that I I think the sheriff has made a very good case for one, but I
I agree with you. I don't, I don't think at the moment that there's a need for two. But I have an opportunity to talk to the sheriff and the chief of police and the mayor at the same time. We're gonna sit down and talk about it, and and if if that meeting goes as I hope, I'll be able to report back to you this afternoon how how that went. Obviously, there will be no decision made at that point.
But will you be carrying a commissioner's point of view?
I I can if you, if there is one.
I would hope that you would carry a commissioner's point of view that we would rather have a shared vehicle with Richmond because it's my feeling that we can share that vehicle, including the burden of payment would be preferable.
I would disagree with that until we have a discussion with. I'm not willing to make that comment until, because if they come to a disagreement or can't come to terms, then it's a viewpoint to say say that.
I'm not saying we wouldn't purchase it if Richmond doesn't help.
Because if Cambridge City has a need for it, if an incident and Richmond's got theirs out, then I mean, there's too many, I think the recommendation from the sheriff, it must be come from the sheriff, not the commissioners. He's the the expert in this.
But, and I'm not saying we should tell Richmond or if Fountain City wants to buy a bear cat, that's their business. But uh, right now, at this point in time, I think we have encouraged the sheriff to go forward with, you know, checking that out and funding sources for a bear cat, and I would hope somehow we can fix the glitch that is keeping us from applying for a grant. I'm not sure why we are not eligible for a grant application on that. I would hope we can really get inside that because it's a very costly vehicle.
I thought he did apply and.
And we're not eligible for some kind of qualifying reason that I.
Something with the MA, how they filled the grant out or something.
Yeah, I I would hope we could explore that a little bit more fully because it is so costly.
To answer your question, I'm not willing to put a joint agreement to.
I don't think we're all exactly on the same page, so I wanna hear what they have to say.
I think that's the first.
So take no point of view, just take a a need for further information into this meeting?
More information. My, again, as I've said to everyone, including the sheriff, my opinion is there ought to be a way to just have one for Wayne County. I don't think I haven't seen a need for there to be two. Having said that, they may be able to convince me that there is a need for two. I I need to talk to them.
Or they may come up with an agreement that one is enough that.
I just, I I, obviously, you only use these things in emergency situations. I can't envision a situation where they'd need. So although bulldozers are pretty substantially armored, I would think, at any rate. We'll uh, we'll have that conversation. So we will recess.
Don't take a point of view, just it's a fact-finding mission.
But I will tell them it's your point of view if you would like me to.
No, I just did not know if you were taking a point of view into the meeting. Okay, so it's a fact-finding, I, you know, I would like to have more facts, but largely I would want to fix the glitch that is keeping us from applying for a grant. Whatever it takes to fix the glitch, because that's a very costly vehicle.
All right, we are recessed until two o'clock with the Drainage Board. Thank you. Let's call the meeting back to order. For the Drainage Board. Rob, what have you got for us today?
I just need approval for uh some removal of some beaver dams, which cost three hundred and forty dollars. And that's on the Russell ditch. We removed five of them, just right in a row, right there. And then on the project on that same ditch, Russell ditch, but this is up on Nolan's Fourth Road. Just south of the tracks, we had to remove some spoils, do some lane preparation there for Dory's land, and that's.
What are spoils?
Where we've dug the open ditch and just kinda spread it out. Raised the elevation a little bit. Dory wasn't happy with that. We get through its gates, so we had to take those out. That was forty-two hundred dollars and that's already been done, but we're gonna have to borrow this from the General Drainage Improvement Fund. And we have two encumbrances there to sign if you approve those.
So Russell is tapped out.
Yes. Well, beavers in that uh project where we took the tile out and made it an open ditch.
That was a big project, yeah.
Can we sell the hats?
Thank you for noticing. Okay, so we have uh authorization for encumbrance of the General Drain Improvement Fund in the amount of forty-two hundred dollars to remove the spoils and prepare the lane. And three hundred and forty dollars for removal of beaver dams. Questions?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve both of those uh encumbrances. Any further discussion?
Holster would need to answer this though, but I'd like to know when that is completed. I because if we just submit the invoices to be paid now, it it'd be coming out of funds collected for the ditches. And then, so we need that money moved. We need to know when that's moved so we can submit.
I'll tell you what, we'll approve these and and sign them, give them back to you, and you can take them to the auditor and ask those questions. Okay? All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
So council doesn't have to approve drainage fund changes?
If if he needs transfers.
You might have to go to workshop.
But he would direct you to.
Right, not on, not on this, because that's what that's for. It's for us to be able to. We we have a general drainage improvement fund, and that's what we're taking out of, and then when money comes from the assessments, we we put it in the the Russell ditch, what we collect, but then it goes right back to that to pay that back.
It's an established, without an official fund transfer. It's a protocol within the Drainage Board's authorization, so it should not require a fund transfer. If we have to do that every time, it'd be a real pain in the neck.
Let's go to the non-legal dry-in issues.
And since I'm not up to the technical capabilities yet here, uh, I provided a copy of a subdivision plat, one lot. Gordon Moore is recking, recommending drainage approval for the G A Davis Woods subdivision, one lot located on Davis Myers Road. And per the Wayne County Technical Review Committee and the Wayne County Advisory Plan Commission Plat Committee, this subdivision requires approval from the Drainage Board. Move to the next page. This is a preliminary.
So this must have been divided three other times prior then to have to give a subdivision approval for one lot.
Yep, and then there's also something in the ordinance where it can be subdivided one time into twenty acres.
And this is the one time.
What their plans are for that?
It's just a one lot, and I think it's going to somebody in the family.
One, one single family?
Yeah, one single family. And it's passed the the Technical Review Committee and the Advisory Plan Commission Plat Committee.
Approve this in the Drainage Board to move on to the next phase.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Here is all your documentation back with signatures. Anything else, Rob? Do we have minutes from the previous meeting? Is there a motion?
Move for approval of minutes from the May tenth meeting.
Have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Okay. That it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, you got some pictures for us.
What have you got? All right, these are the photographs of your properties that we now own because of the deed sale. And so just quickly run through these. You also have a sheet in front of you, the the bid sheet that was used at the auction that correspond with with the pictures. So this first one, obviously, the grass isn't quite to the level that needs to be mowed yet.
It it does. We haven't gotten a call from from the city yet.
It hasn't reached the height yet.
Right, where they would, it would be a
whatever that is.
Is that taken after the rain?
Today.
Today, okay.
It was today.
Yeah, it's gonna grow like crazy tomorrow.
There's the third one, so that's okay. That one we'll probably but we have not yet.
What one? Are are you changing pictures? That's the same picture.
Am I miss, looking at the wrong TV or?
This is, this is a vacant lot?
There's the third, there's the third one.
That's the third one on the list.
That one actually got bought.
Which which of these unimproved properties got bought? I can't tell.
This, the uh, second one on your list, which is this one.
Thirty-seven feet west end, thirty-eight HH Veta. Bought. Okay, sold.
And then the next one.
Lot ten, DeWitt.
Those two were sold? Lot ten to Wett. One sixteen north eighteenth, is that bought?
The uh, the one, yeah, one sixteen north eighteenth was bought.
Those are the only two that actually sold.
You don't have to worry about those two.
But we, of course, do not expect them to be maintained.
So that looks pretty good.
Who's maintaining it?
Well, my guess is the neighbor. That's those apartments to the, next to it there, my guess is.
The Housing Authority. That's probably the one that we offered to the city because it's adjacent, or to the Housing Authority. To their property and they said they didn't want it.
These aren't in order that they appear on the sales sheet.
Yes, they are. They're following the order of the sales sheet. This is the north seventeenth one.
North seventeenth, nine, one, five, seven.
This one is?
Yeah.
That bare ground-
Oh, you did put them in order, okay.
That bare ground was bare ground north of three oh eight, north twelve.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so this one. So this one is two nineteen North Seventeenth?
Yeah.
And that's-
Getting close.
This one is, uh, five twelve South D.
This one sold for three point five million.
Yeah, that's the-
Wait a minute. Now, this one's two nineteen North Seventeenth, isn't it?
No, it is, uh-
Yeah, it's two twenty one.
I'm sorry. It's two nineteen North Seventeenth. Girl, I'm sorry.
I, it didn't switch. Then you said one was five twelve South D.
That looks like two nineteen North Seventeenth.
Yeah.
Ron, I have those two pictures.
I drove by.
There's most, that's North Seventeenth.
That is the same one.
Same one with the-
The picture of the same one.
Right.
Yeah.
Same thing there.
Okay, and that's the same.
And it's bad. Did we get, uh, not just weed notice on that one?
No.
It's a matter of time, because it's bad.
Yeah, we'll get one.
This is, uh, Thirteenth.
Or South D Street. Oh.
The, the picture hasn't changed, Steve.
I know, and I'm changing it down.
Okay, so Richmond. Uh, it's okay. No, you're not attacking.
We can be flexible.
All right, Richmond Avenue, right there. Richmond Avenue. This is Richmond Avenue, yeah, plenty Richmond Avenue.
I was going the wrong way.
It's not there.
Well, that, somebody's been mowing that all along.
Yeah, somebody's been mowing it.
Yeah, we haven't seen five twelve South D as in David.
Okay, here's one that we got the, the notice on.
Notice on. And that is one thirty-seven South Thirteenth.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. My, obviously my mower won't mow that.
Right.
So, so what's the process? Is just, do we have to get a bid for somebody to go out and maintain it from the lawns? Or can we just hire somebody to do it?
I guess it's gonna depend, you know, when you talk about getting a bid for how long, depends on how long you're on, you think you're gonna keep these things.
Well, it's gonna be at least a month, we know that.
To me, we do these, I wouldn't wanna mow this every week.
No.
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 I'm suggesting probably every three weeks.
Three weeks we're doing it. What is the inch level before we get a notice?
Was it twelve inches?
It won't go twelve inches in three weeks probably. Some of the weeds will.
I just, I suggest we just contact the lawn service and have them, the ones we flag that need mowed now, mow them.
Mow them every three weeks.
And then-
So you don't have to be calling them all the time.
As we get notices.
Yeah.
Cause they're aware, I've talked to them and, and they know that we, we own these and that.
And we send the, this is among our claims to Dr. Tanner.
Yeah. I think this is the one Matt thought might be occupied.
Oh.
So you see a trash container out front and it's, and it's mowed.
And tell them that we've appointed a person and ask if there's a form we need to fill out.
You saw him yesterday, did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, he wasn't aware we'd taken it. He was grateful we did so quickly.
So we'll take care of that.
Okay, the next thing on my list, uh, my last meeting, Brad, you requested, um, an update on the Make My Move program. So I've created an update for you that I wanna share today. So we launched the remote worker relocation program with Make My Move back in August of two thousand and twenty-two. We've had nearly four hundred thousand impressions on Facebook from their marketing efforts. And that's resulted in one thousand five hundred and eighty-seven individuals who have applied to the program. Uh, two hundred and sixty-six were pre-approved. And then after further investigation, twenty-six have met our minimum salary requirements for our program. So we made, you know, those twenty-six offers. Eleven have set, accepted and six have moved. Um, even though this is a program open for all of Wayne County, all of those movers today have relocated to Richmond. And the other five are still looking for suitable housing. So we are in the process, I just had my monthly call with Make My Move this morning, and we're in the process of revamping our housing guide. I'm trying to provide some more housing options. We're including property managers because even though we had a few property managers, we need to really cast the net wider and make sure that individuals have more options. We just had a mover last week who was in Richmond, made a visit, work, is working with a realtor and viewed several houses, didn't find anything yet. Um, but that realtor's continuing to look. So the constraints on the housing market are sh, are surely impacting our ability to recruit individuals through this program.
Absolutely.
Um, but of the six who have moved, um, one has brought a significant other and the other has, and another has brought her daughter with her. So, um, those individuals are eighteen or over and have actually entered the workforce, which is positive. And, um, we've had movers move from California, Nevada, Colorado, Michigan, Florida, and Ohio.
Diverse.
Very diverse.
So eight people out of-
Eight people total.
Okay, great.
Um, and then lastly, the average salary of the six remote workers is seventy-one thousand, thirty-three dollars. And, uh, Make My Move put together an economic impact analysis that they verbally shared with me. I haven't actually seen the document, but they indicate that the economic impact of the six movers um, results in three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars a year, both in consumer spending and new tax revenue. That would be property taxes, income taxes.
Great.
Yeah. So that's where we are so far. And then on the back, I just, uh, took a snapshot from our Richmond website or, and it shows what the actual package is, um, that has an average value of about seventy-five hundred dollars. Um, that does include the five thousand dollar cash incentive, but you'll see everything else that's included in that package as well.
Val, do you see anything changing on this Make My Move? Where you, you, you watch the news now and there's a, a push now for employees to come back to, employers to bring their employees back to their facilities now. Do you see anything that this is gonna be slowing down maybe, or have you heard anything?
I think there are still a lot of jobs that will be permanently remote, so I don't know that that will impact this. Um, but we have talked about ways in which to expand this beyond just remote workers. So if you attended the EDC's annual meeting, um, the gentleman from InVets talked about a statewide effort to recruit veterans to the state of Indiana. So we have a call scheduled with him to talk about what it might look like if we offer an incentive package to those individuals so that when they consider landing in Indiana, they highly consider Wayne County. Uh, we've also talked about an incentive to retain out-of-state college graduates. Um, we've talked about ways to work with employers to kind of enhance their relocation packages. So there's a lot of opportunities where we could look at growing this program beyond remote workers. But I haven't fully investigated all of those opportunities to understand what that might look like and honestly, what the cost might be to the community.
What was the cost for, for Make My Move and how was that broken down? I know part of it came from IEDC, but-
Yes, so the cost to engage with Make My Move as a company was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, half of that was provided as a grant from the IEDC. And then, um, we covered, I believe between the city and the county, the other sixty thousand dollars. And then a hundred percent of the cash incentive, so five thousand dollars per mover, and our goal is twenty. So a hundred thousand dollars is coming from consolidated edit. So all in all, we have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars invested as a community in this program.
Well, I-
Outside of the EDC's time and managing that.
Which is significant.
Yeah.
But I would encourage us to consider expansion.
I would too.
I think, uh, for one thing, I don't think limiting it to remote workers. I know that's the state's program.
Yes.
With IEDC is it has to be out-of-state remote workers who move into Indiana. But I think there are opportunities and there was legislation that, that makes it allowable for us to do other things with, with, uh, with tax dollars. And I think recruiting talent continues to be one of our significant challenges. And potentially this is much faster, um, and has a, a more immediate impact than, uh, investing in developing talent. So not that we shouldn't do some of that. In fact, we already do that from the existing tax structure with, with the, the K twelve schools and the universities and Ivy Tech and Earlham College. Um, literally tens of millions of dollars every year are spent on talent development. Not to mention what the private sector does in developing their own employees. Uh, but we don't spend very much at all on recruiting talent. And if we partner with those, um, high-income employers like Reed Health, like the school system, like the colleges, um, like the manufacturers who need engineering talent and, and expertise, where we're talking about significant, uh, salaries. I really think we ought to, we ought to look at that and invest in more of that.
Especially like the InVets program, he was-
Absolutely.
Inspiring speaker, so that was-
Absolutely, but-
When they're already doing all of the marketing and outreach for us, you know, we would just have to put a package together and help them communicate that too.
And that probably is the low-hanging fruit.
Yes.
On, on all of this.
And if this incentive could be made retroactive, Wayne County government just hired a Purdue grad and from Wayne County, but she had relocated to Montana, but we brought her back.
Right.
So if it's retroactive, I'm sure she could use an extra five thousand dollars at an arts bank.
Sure she could. Yeah, yesterday at our initial Ready Two Point O workshop, population increase was a top priority for all of the working groups. So, um, it's evident that we need to do more work in that space. And so if we have to incentivize them to move here, we should do that in conjunction with housing development and getting some of these projects off the ground.
You gotta have a place to move to.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
What else?
Um, the last thing I have is a question about the budget meetings. Do you have any indication from council if those will start in July?
The, the budget meetings will definitely start in July, whether your budget meeting will be in July. I haven't heard. I can, I can check on that and get back with you.
Yeah, we are in no rush. Uh, we're, we're still developing our budget. So if, if you wanna give us more time, we will take it.
Not June, it definitely won't be June.
I'll follow up and, and get back with you.
Okay, that sounds great.
Thanks.
All right, that's all I have for you today.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Rob.
You're welcome.
Now, get back out there and land another business. Come on.
And congratulations on the, uh, prominent, uh, press that, uh, you've been able to land lately. That's just been really impressive.
Yeah, this last project, just yesterday, um, I think it was, it was on this morning's lead story for Inside Indiana Business. So, um, I was actually interviewed a second time by them at the end of May after we released our annual report.
Right.
And I was interviewed about our industrial park expansion and all the investment we've made in that. And so that got a lot of headway as well.
That was a beautiful segment.
They didn't, they didn't replay the, the drone shot of the, uh, water tower, did they? That was the only fly in the ointment.
No, no, they did not.
That was the only fly in the ointment that I saw from the Gary Dick interview was they had this drone shot of the water tower at Gateway Park. And the rust was streaked down the side of it.
Well, perhaps if-
Probably something with that.
Perhaps if the refurbishment of the existing tower in Gateway, um, isn't on the immediate horizon by Cambridge City Water, we should maybe consider-
I, I think we should, I think we should.
Resolidating that, because you can see it from the interstate and it does look horrible.
Absolutely. It doesn't look good at all.
First impression.
So, uh, feel free to put a bug in there here about that.
Okay.
At least cleaning and painting, I would think, has to be on the agenda for that.
Right, and that can be separate from the interior maintenance of the tower.
Exactly, so they wouldn't have to shut down the system to do that. Okay. Thanks a lot, Val.
Great, thank you.
We'll see you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, uh, Steve. Projects, you wanna start that discussion?
Just a reminder, I think in their meeting here for.
Yes.
Is there?
Sheriff's Department.
Large.
Okay.
What's to be?
Do we have to set up different for that?
Probably need more seats.
What's to be?
I, I don't know.
Something with the sheriff's department.
It'll be.
We have an meeting, I didn't know that.
It's the only mandatory meeting we have like that, so.
It's the whole department?
Whole department.
So.
Wow.
We don't have enough seats.
It's whole, that's, that's correct.
Randy didn't think there'd be more than sixty or seventy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're in pretty good shape, but we might wanna have your staff bring up a few more chairs, you think?
Well, I think when we move these up, we've got eighty-four. There's eighty-four in here now.
Okay, then we should be good, but we have an hour and, uh, eight minutes.
With a little time to set up.
Okay, we have an hour.
Okay.
Wow, putting the pressure on you there.
I know it. Okay, before you, you have the, uh, some potential projects for two thousand and twenty-four and also the project list for two thousand and twenty-three that has not been funded yet, except now the first one.
The HVAC?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, I did hear from five council members who, who are all, uh, in agreement with replacing all three units. And, uh, one council member is out of town, so we can probably hear from that person. And then I haven't heard from the seventh, but Beth was comfortable with four councilmen. So I've already called the contractor, those are on order. And he is also going to loan us, uh, three air conditioning units for the offices at no cost.
Have you let Jonathan know about?
No.
You don't have one over process.
I wouldn't be surprised when they show up with that there.
He watches TV, he's gonna, he's gonna know about it now.
So, um, and then the, again on those twenty, twenty-three, by your twenty-eighth meeting of this month, I should have some cost estimates for the, uh, uh, two, three, and four, and five.
Okay, and number five is bolded, is that?
No, that, I couldn't get the bold off.
Okay, but we're doing, we're, we're doing, trying to do the Coolman and the horse barn roof as like one project.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, then the rest of these were taken from the DLZ assessment report from, uh, several years ago where we rated, you know, the first, second, third critical. These are projects that are remaining. There are also some that we have added. For example, uh, on page, uh, the second page, item number fourteen, that was not on the DLZ report, but I've added that because of the issues that we were having with the HVAC unit at Public Health. And then items nineteen through twenty-six, uh, have come out of, uh, discussions with the fairgrounds.
Opinion you do?
Well, no, they all would, they really, really want thirty thousand.
But you just said that they-
But they don't wanna run the risk. Since, since all it would be, would be a letter that, you know, they wouldn't have the, this year, since they don't have the luxury of an in-person case to be made, um, they feel that just a black and white letter going forward to justify the increase that, um, it might be received in a manner that might not be beneficial to WCTV.
Let, let's do it this way. How about we kind of table this right now? And maybe I could speak to the president of the board or something and get-
Phil Stevenson?
There's no, there's no need to make a decision today, but we do need to-
Why don't we, why don't we do that, one on each?
They have done so much, you know, that their programming for county government far exceeds anything else and they do so much for all.
All right, so you'll, you'll talk to them and we'll come back to it next week.
Talk to the board, yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Um. Hi, Val.
Hi.
And Ron's on the board too.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Doing well, doing well. What have you got for us today?
Are you sitting in for Ron?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know Joe?
I do know Joe, yes, we actually graduated together.
Really?
Oh, really?
How about that?
Yeah, and he serves on the girls' board of directors, which is well. So typically I come to you after my board has met. Uh, but this month we had to reschedule the board meeting and it does not occur until tomorrow afternoon because we couldn't get an, um, in-person quorum, um, for our original meeting date. So the board has not reviewed or approved any of this. But I do wanna start on page six as I normally do, just to do a brief review of our financials. Um, in this packet, the board will actually be re, be reviewing April and May financial statements because we didn't have an official board meeting in May due to the annual meeting. So as you can see on page six, um, for May, the most current financials that we have, we were under budget month to date. We were under budget month to date by eight thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Under budget year to date by over fifty-five thousand dollars. So we're tracking well with our financials and our spending, um, so far in twenty twenty-three. The next thing I wanted to share with you, so in addition to the packet, uh, behind, there are some additional attachments I brought with me. The first is a news release that went out yesterday announcing Anchor Ingredients. That is the rail transloading project formerly referred to as Project Thomas. We've officially announced this project. They will be making a forty million dollar investment in the Midwest Industrial Park. They've acquired thirty-five point nine acres directly east of Blue Buffalo. This was actually land previously sold to Blue Buffalo that they sold then to Anchor Ingredients for this development. Um, this is a really impactful project that will support our growing pet food cluster in the region. In addition to having Hills and Blue Buffalo here in the community, as well as Purina that does animal pro, animal food. Not domestic dog and cat, but having those three, um, animal food producers in Wayne County. As well as Royal Canin, who is building a large scale production plant in Lewisburg, Ohio. And Diamond Pet Food, who's building a large scale pet food produce, producing facility in Rushville. Um, we're becoming the pet food hub in East Central Indiana and, and most likely the Midwest. So Anchor Ingredients sees a great opportunity to support the growing pet food industry here. So they will be bringing in bulk raw materials, things like, um, grains and legumes. Um, that will be then processed on site and then shipped to the existing pet food producers in the region. So this will certainly help grow our existing industries, but also will be a great asset to potentially attract more pet food producers to the area.
And it'll just be dry ingredients?
Dry ingredients only, yes.
No protein.
No proteins, although there are some proteins like pea proteins, you know, plant-based proteins, right? Right, um, so anyhow, um, they are ready to get started right away and hope to be open by June of twenty twenty-four. And they will eventually be up to thirty full-time employees that pay an average wage of twenty-five dollars an hour.
Right.
So for this project, um, they are not receiving a tax abatement, they are not receiving an edit grant. This was a really unique incentive package that entailed a nine hundred thousand dollar investment by the Richmond Redevelopment Commission. That will go towards the construction of the rail spur off of the Norfolk Southern Main Line into the property. So Richmond's just financing a small portion of what's a, a very high cost to the company. Um, another unique incentive is Norfolk Southern actually participated. And they are spending over four hundred thousand dollars and installing the mainline switch. And everything that is involved with that engineering aspect, so they were a financial participant in the project as well. So they're, because the EDC board is, or the EDC as an entity is a pass-through for this incentive from the Richmond Redevelopment Commission. Uh, A.J. Sigmund will be drafting a three-way incentive agreement between Anchor, the EDC, and the city of Richmond. Outlining how that will be structured. But essentially, the company will have to spend the money, build the spur, and then seek reimbursement through the EDC. Who then will submit the reimbursement to the redevelopment commission.
Okay, any state incentives involved?
There were, uh, that is on the back page. Three hundred and ten thousand dollars in tax-based, um, tax credits and two hundred thousand dollars in manufacturing readiness grants.
Great.
You've been working on Project Thomas for a long time.
So I went back and this was originally called Project Silo in two thousand and seventeen.
Wow.
Uh, when they came to us after Blue announced their location here. So this has been one of those hot and cold prospects for many years. And finally, things evolved and their relationship with Blue Buffalo led them to be able to make this investment here. But we got it to a point where they're building excess capacity to support more companies than Blue.
Good.
This is really important to the, this industry hub development. And so Blue Buffalo is a major client of.
Yes. Yes.
Anchor, great.
So that's exciting news, thank you, thank you. Any other questions on that before we move on?
The number of employees, I missed that.
Thirty.
Thank you.
Twenty-five dollars an hour average wage.
Excellent.
Okay, the next item of discussion, um, is regarding Sugar Creek Packing Company over in Cambridge City in the Gateway Industrial Park. We have been talking with them for several months and they are interested in acquiring the sixteen point nine acres just south of their plant. That is owned by the county, it is part of the Gateway Industrial Park. Um, Sugar Creek has a need to expand immediately their truck staging and parking area. So because of the layout of the facility, it makes sense for them to utilize the land to the south of them to, to expand this parking and truck staging. You all are aware, they already own some acreage around the park. Um, I've talked to them at length to have an understanding of what they intend to do with all of that ground. And they do have various future plans for how they intend to utilize that. And they really made a case that originally they bought that ninety acres to the west. It does not make sense for them to expand their facility and their site plan west. The south is really their preferred way in order for, to have maximum site utilization. So there is not an immediate project tied to this land acquisition. Like I said, truck staging and parking is their immediate need, um, but there is potential for the land to be more fully developed in the future. Uh, they just can't say exactly what that will look like at this point and what the timing of that project could be. So one of the challenges with selling the, this ground, which I do want to say would be at full price, fourteen thousand five hundred per acre. Because there isn't a large-scale investment project, we would not be discounting the cost of the ground as part of an incentive. And Sugar Creek has agreed to that. Um, part of the problem with selling them this ground is that the covenants and restrictions of the park indicate that. A buyer of land has to build a primary structure within five years. Because Sugar Creek doesn't have a timeline or a project yet, that could be problematic. We talked about a replat and combining their existing lot with this new lot. But because they only have about fifteen years remaining in their, um, TIF allocation area. Once they would potentially decide to develop, they would have just a few years to maximize a TIF bond, uh, in, in their repayment plan. So we really don't feel like that's the best way to go about this. And so we talked and we felt like amending the covenants and restrictions was the best path forward. So George Sowers, the EDC attorney, he did consult with Ron Cross, Steve Higginbotham has been involved in this conversation. And we did take this to the EDC's Industrial Park Committee, who also serves as the Architectural Review Committee for the park. And they did approve these amendments. Um, those amendments are in front of you in, in your packet of information as well. So I bring this to you for your consideration as well, because, um, you know, you do oversee and own the park. So I want to be sure, uh, that the commissioners are supportive of this change. And really what we're stating is that, um, instead of saying that. The owner of the la, or the purchase of the land has to build a primary structure within five years. That does not apply if an existing company is buying land, a jet, or content, uh, what's it?
Contiguous.
Contiguous to their existing lot.
And this would be the only parcel currently available that, that would meet that contiguous requirement. So the other, the other acreage is not contiguous, it's across the street from everything else.
Correct, it would only apply to a potential future tenant that would buy another law on the other side of Gateway Road, right?
Sixteen acres isn't going to produce a lot of jobs or a lot of.
No, there is no guarantee of jobs, there's no guarantee of a large investment project.
But you also, we've talked before about this and you thought that that parcel was, was not, um. A good parcel for development for another company, just because of its location and, and what's around it. And, and this.
Yes, this seems like the best use for this ground.
That was my question.
You know, Sugar Creek has invested hundreds of millions of dollars already. Um, they continue to invest, they invest quietly. Um, they don't always go for a tax abatement for every small investment project they make. And, you know, based on how much they've grown over the last five years. I'm confident that there will eventually be a large-scale investment project tied to this. And what this also does is allows them to continue to shift south. So perhaps this ground is always staging and parking, but they can actually build and expand their existing building. And take away the existing parking area that they have as they continue to expand further south.
I know Ron was involved in it, but Joe, do you see any?
I don't see any problems with it, uh, Ron never, uh, raised any red flags of any means.
Do you know if their intent is to, uh, cover some of the sixteen acres with concrete? Perhaps addressing a, a drainage issue or have some.
Um, they would follow all the typical.
They would have to go to the.
Yeah, we.
The Industrial Park Committee and the Drainage Board.
Lot of, lot of concrete.
We need a motion to approve this.
We would. So we have a motion to approve this revised language for, uh, for the Industrial Park Committee.
They're such a good neighbor. Good partner, I was second.
We have a, a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, so the next step is, uh, my attorney is drafting a consent form and we intend to go to Sugar Creek and Dot and get their approval as well.
And just so you know, we did have a recommendation for a replacement on the Western Wayne Shore District. And we did follow the recommendation, make that appointment last week.
Right.
And I.
Uh, Ron, I talked to Ron and, um, he's, he was going to the next superboard meeting as his last. Thirteen twenty South Sixth.
Yeah. He doesn't know for sure, but he says it certainly looked like it could be. I don't know what you do in that case.
Well, I think we contact our attorney and we say, hey. While you're down there talking to whoever lives there, um, could you mow the grass? Thank you.
See, there's the side.
Looks like.
What do you say, eight hundred a month rent, is that the?
Has that got a meter on it? Does that got a meter on it? I can't see, no.
I don't see a meter.
No.
Where do I see lights on?
I do not see an electric meter there.
But that is a meter.
Put an electric cord to the neighbors. That's what you usually see.
If there is, it's probably green.
This is, uh, bare ground there on North.
North Seventeen.
And obviously someone's mowing that one, looks like it.
Until they don't.
So. You know, we, we, we took. Great pains to find properties that we wouldn't have to maintain.
I know.
This is one we got a notice on.
Eight twenty-three South G.
Yeah. Yeah, that looks somewhat notable. Yeah, that is not too bad.
But it couldn't have debris in there.
Yeah, that would be one thing I want to check, but.
Do you think your equipment could handle that one?
Probably that one, although that would be an easy one for Mike to mow.
It looks like it.
Yeah.
What, is this a, is that the sidewalk there? Is that a driveway?
The South G, correct?
Yeah.
South G.
Yeah, eight twenty-three South G.
I think it's a driveway.
Could be an house.
And there's, uh, whoops, wrong, too fast, yeah.
Now that one's been mowed a little bit. I don't know whether we own.
Might just be that strip.
Exactly, I don't know whether we just own that strip or if it's, which is funny, they mow on both sides of it, don't mow.
They got a surveyor out there with lawn mower, huh? Now, is this Eighth Street, nine oh two North Eighth?
Yeah.
It's a butterfly garden.
This is, uh, South Eye. We'll be getting a notice on that one for long, yeah. And then there's, uh, North Nineteenth.
Is there a backyard there too, you think?
I'm sure there is. Probably get a notice on that one too.
Yeah.
And then there's, we've got a notice on this one.
I guess, uh.
So.
Oh, is that, is that the structure?
No, this is a bare lot, we, we don't own.
This is six nineteen.
Oh, no, it isn't, there isn't, yeah, it is a house.
Or is that maybe that garage in the back is a structure?
So.
So we did get a weed notice on.
On this, on this one, yeah. We've got three, three notices and you've seen, we can probably go and get two or three more pretty quick, so.
Yeah, there's at least seven, I think, that need to be mowed.
So. What's your pleasure?
Do you have experience with a lawn mowing service, a landscaper that you trust?
You know, the, the problem with that is they're all book, you know, the, the, the ones that. They're going to take care of their existing clients. Exactly, but I'll try.
Yeah, just call a few. Call a few.
I'll call a few and see what they're, what they say, um.
We may not have the luxury of three competitive bids.
No, but it's a service, so we don't.
You don't have to.
I'll call around and see if we can't get, but we know we have three and we're probably might get three or four more.
Yes.
Probably won't get top of the line.
Well, I mean, properties to mow.
Yeah, we'll get several.
And, and probably, probably need to mow these a couple times until before we begin.
Other thing is, how long will it be before, um, those two that were purchased and paid for? Um, will show up on the transfer?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
So we probably, we probably need to notify the city that, that these two, somebody bought. And, and we could get that information for them of who it is.
I'll find out, I'll find out from Selena how long that.
They want the deed sent to, not the address that they bid from.
Right.
I'll find out from Selena how long that might take.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Use your judgment on who you pick, but it's got to be done as soon as possible. And hopefully they'll be in other hands as soon as possible. Do we know everything we need to know about moving forward with another sale?
No, we won't until Ron gets back.
What I, I, you know, my point of view is that we hold the sale in person. Because so many of the local people really do not favor an online sale. At least that's the opinion we have from, uh, just.
A couple people.
It's, you know, s- some people and it, and we are not really experienced in online sales, so. Uh, but I think we could just collect the money the day of the sale, not actually gavel the sale closed. Until every property is paid for. Or we, it, every property has run its course. Uh, occasionally, we'll have a one or two properties that just can't sell at any price. But I don't see why we couldn't say that every property must be paid for before the sale is closed.
I think you could say that, but if that same group applies, then they'll just, they'll just keep doing it over.
Because you'll have to auction it off again, right?
And then another one will buy it and will pay for it and you do it again, so we had what, fifty or sixty people, theoretically that could happen.
Well, if we don't put it on the SRI site, but just.
No, I agree with that.
Do not put it on the SRI site, just advertise it and a- as, as required locally. Um, and he's having a declining number of people fly in.
I'm sure.
Uh, and, you know, we're saying, we're going to keep the sale open until every property is sold. You know, if SRI will go along with this, we can always say, okay, these properties have not sold, they have not been paid for. And, and we will keep the sale open until every property is sold or we did, or commissioners deem the sale is over. And if it hasn't been paid for, then and only then will we maintain ownership. And then we can go. And then we can go to adjacent property owners and dispense of these properties in another way. But I truly believe if we have an in-person sale. And we could take the second highest bidder, which will, you know, if Tanner does send people, it'll be a Tanner person probably, or maybe not. Maintain the information on the second highest bidder and if.
I don't think he'll show his face again in Wayne County. I think it's, he did his, what he wanted to do and.
He'll move on.
Yeah, that's my personal opinion. I, I, I think.
Right.
Cause he's already shown that he didn't pay, he's not gonna come back and then.
I, I think we can just have an in-person sale, but still I would like to collect the day of the sale, you know, make that the policy in the advertisement.
I think we need to wait for Ron to be back next week to make, to tell us whether we can do that.
So if you think about my proposal, until Ron gets back.
I don't have a problem with what you've suggested.
Throw a letter of funds or something.
Yeah, I don't wanna offer these properties to adjacent property owners until we give legitimate local bidders an opportunity. To continue with their legitimate, with a legitimate auction. I think we should give local bidders. A shot at a legitimate auction before we take any other steps.
Okay. Let's move on. If I can sort through this stuff. Valerie should be here momentarily. In the meantime, uh. Mary Ann, you wanted to talk about the budget as it related to WCTV. You wanted to increase the number that was in the, the budget from twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand.
Right, I, um.
And I, that, that's what the commissioners proposed.
And our discussion.
We can change it if, if we agree to do that. It came up last year. You and Kenny supported it being at thirty thousand, I did not, um I still don't. But that would, that would make you the, the arbiter Brad, so do you wanna make your case for Brad?
Yeah, what is the reasoning for the increase?
They are having a hard time meeting their expenses. Um COVID hit them hard. You know, fundraising for all nonprofits was uh very difficult during COVID. Their in-person fundraising events as well as other events, uh just like all nonprofits are still recovering from their. Uh nonprofit fundraising ventures. Uh they've had uh many expenses and. Um twenty-five thousand is much appreciated. At the board meeting yesterday, um. I told them that my feeling was uh that thirty thousand probably would be a tough sell. To counsel, um and that uh this year we were not having the nonprofits come in and make their case. Uh and so the board said, well, we don't wanna aggravate county officials. So the board uh decided they would thank the county for its uh support in the past. And would be grateful for twenty-five thousand in the twenty-four budget. Uh because they did not wanna run the risk of uh appearing greedy. Um but of course they did and would appreciate any larger contribution to help them meet their shortfall. Uh in the next year going forward. So I maintain my feeling, looking at the budget and their shortfall and. Their ongoing recovery from the COVID uh setback. That the additional five thousand dollars is merited, so I would hope that what if you might uh.
And that's an, that's an increase from the twenty thousand uh two years ago, so.
But they did take a cutback in the past, so, and it's well below the franchise fee. I don't know exactly what the franchise fee income is this year, but.
It's, it's been, it's run between thirty and thirty-five thousand, so it's not really well below, so we give most of our.
But, I mean, throughout the years, for thirty-five years, we have never passed on. The income that we receive from franchise fees over the past thirty-five years.
Or has the city, which is.
But the city of course has significantly more than thirty-five thousand dollars in franchise fees, just because of the nature of the cable distribution in the county.
They've always given forty percent. We've always, we've always given significantly more than forty percent, so anyway. I don't know if that's.
So, well, so, so my understanding is the board is okay with the twenty-five thousand, it's your personal.
Us to appoint Andy Roberts uh to the Centerville Plan Commission. Uh from the uh Two Mile French jurisdiction. He lives on West Grove Road. And he, I, I reached out to Dan to get additional information and to ask him if there was a form we needed to. Fill out and I haven't heard back from him, uh but. Anybody have any input on Andy Roberts as a. Our appointment to the Centerville Plan Commission?
Do you know if he's related to the immediate past clerk treasurer?
I do not, no.
Okay, uh I move for approval of Andy Roberts to the Centerville uh Two Mile French planning committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Unless we could trade a agreement with Centerville to uh rest the Ops Board's request?
Um I will uh follow up with Dan and see if there's a form we need to sign.
Okay. I'm just curious, has he, has he addressed the Ops Board's request?
I think there was an article in the Western Wayne News that they did about the.
Yeah, they were, they, they, they're gonna look at the Muncie Company.
Yeah.
Oh, they are, okay.
An answering service, yeah.
Okay, so they, they're being amenable, that's great.
As far as I have heard, they, they had some questions and, but they're looking at alternatives.
Yeah, it looks like that they're heading towards the direction of taking care of themselves.
And there's not much option for it really. Uh so the Ops Board was pretty adamant about, about taking that step. Bobby, what else do we have?
Uh the covered bridge certification needs to be signed.
Thank you.
Did we find any?
So every year, um we have to certify that we don't have any covered bridges. We have checked. Brandon, we have not built any in the last year. Uh unless you count people walking across them with umbrellas out, but.
Not on public roads.
Bank Bridge doesn't count as a covered bridge.
No, I don't think so.
There's one on private property in my neighborhood.
So this would certify that we, the county commissioners of Wayne County hereby certify. That the aforementioned is the true number of covered bridges within said county's road system.
Okay.
Not on private property for calendar year twenty twenty-three, and that number would be zero.
Move that we submit that, that we have zero covered bridges?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. So they need our printed name.
All three or.
Signature, it's all three of us. What else, Bobby? Seems like I gave you something else, but I don't.
Funding for Main Street Building Assessment.
Oh, yes, thank you. Okay, um golly. I think it was the end of twenty twenty-one. Uh we worked with the uh Wayne County Foundation. And uh the city of Richmond and we hired uh Kevin McCurdy. And uh. Who's the builder? Oh, Brian.
Ballinger.
Ballinger from uh. From Wezen Hunt Construction. They uh worked with, and it was coordinated by uh Forward Wayne County. They worked with their four Main Street groups in Wayne County, Richmond, Centerville, Cambridge and Hagerstown. So the Main Street groups coordinated with all of the downtown businesses in their area. They defined what, how. However, they wanted to define their downtown. They invited the building owners uh to participate in this. Assessment of the uh. Maintenance needs of their building. It's a private assessment that just shared with the building owners. Uh they did have to si- uh sign something that said if there is uh an issue that's a threat to life and limb. That uh that that could be made available to the appropriate authorities. There, as far as I know, there were no issues like that. Uh at any rate, uh. Not all businesses, as you might anticipate, chose to participate in that assessment. There were roughly half, maybe a little bit less than half in Richmond. Uh because the Main Street, there are more buildings on Main Street. I think there was eighteen in Richmond, eighteen in Hagerstown. And a little uh fewer in, in Centerville and Cambridge, as I recall. Uh so we made a, a contribution to that effort. Uh they did not end up spending all the money. There's about twenty-one thousand dollars that uh of, that the county contributed that was not spent. Uh and they are asking whether we want to uh get that money back. Or whether we want to leave it with the foundation to spend as on uh projects. In the, in the help plan as it's developed. I told them I thought we'd probably ask for the money to be returned. So that county can decide on how it's spent, but uh that's an, an open question. And the project that, that they talked about was a project related to uh. Wireless broadband expansion in Wayne County, but uh that will continue to be uh part of the. It's only fourteen thousand dollars, I have no fear.
Okay.
Fourteen thousand dollars, not, not, not fourteen million, just fourteen thousand. So anyway, uh. I put it to you, do you want us to request the money back?
What would the broadband expenditure do?
It would provide uh the infrastructure for wireless internet wifi. In uh in the town parks. In the.
In the Main Street town parks?
In the help, in the help communities, not just Main Street.
Or just help?
So it's, there are six small towns in the city of Richmond. The cities, the city would also get some money back. And that would go towards uh, towards expansion improvement. But this would go towards expansion in the small towns. Fourteen, fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars, I think.
Into the help part, um.
Then we can ask for it back, though those are the two options.
How about we just ask for the money back and then?
That's fine. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, why should it be governed by the help restrictions and?
Can I ask for a motion? I'm not gonna try to justify their request, I just, those are the two options. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, there we go. Bobby, does that cover everything?
Everything I had on my list.
I think so, okay.
Still have five minutes. I've got a couple, yeah. Uh you mentioned help, I'm wondering if you can give us any update? Did I hear correctly yesterday at the ready meeting that there are six projects that have been narrowed down by the court committee or did I? Okay, the acoustics weren't great, didn't that mean? Do you have any update on the court committee's um activities?
There are about forty.
Okay, I, I, okay, good.
That uh are being uh are likely to be recommended to be funded.
Including the small towns, right?
Including the small towns projects and that is, uh and then there are some that are, that are still, will still be in the plan. But they're not developed as a project and they're not recommended for funding. Uh I would anticipate that we will be over, for the county will be somewhat over the three point eight million. The, the low side of the commitment, we have to give at least, commit at least three point eight million. I anticipate will be over that number, but uh how much, I'm not sure yet. So it will, it will come back to us probably before the end of, of June.
Yeah, moving fast, I just wonder.
Uh and so at least my anticipation is we will send it to Purdue and we will send it to. Uh the elected officials as a draft. Not for public consumption yet, but as a, as a draft that's still a work in progress. By the end of June. The Purdue's uh schedule calls for them to get us back a, a written. Draft plan uh in July and then uh hopefully we would massage that. Send back any, any requests for changes um and get a final, uh their final draft back. In August and hopefully have it approved by all seven communities plus the county uh by September.
So I mean, we only have like six weeks to do all this reading and massaging and deliberating and all that, so it's.
Moving quickly, yes.
So we should be seeing something within, within two weeks?
I, that's my expectation.
Okay, good. Also, um I'm wondering if you have any update on the conversations with Greg Beimer's group in uh. Uh Randolph County regarding grant uh?
They are uh, they are on board for the help uh grant, the million dollar grant.
Okay.
And I've been continuing conversations about which of uh, you said Greg Beimer, but it's. It's actually Mike Klein Peter and Associates.
That's the name of the company, I can never remember the three names all, and I, Greg's the only one I know of.
Been talking to Mike, he's got, I think he said fifteen uh grant administrators on staff now.
Great.
And we're talking through uh what are their areas of expertise and, and what could they help us with? So he's, he's looking at those options. Most of them are, are very focused on. Uh Okra, CDBG, Greens, uh but he does have a couple of people that came to him with prior experience in other areas.
Some housing, I, I would really love some housing expertise as we try to.
Monty Polling, who was, uh he's retired from being the, the town manager. For Union City.
Oh, they've had a lot of grants.
They've done a lot uh with, with housing grants, affordable housing and, and other things. Uh some of the owner occupied uh renovations and repairs, so.
Housing, the arts, Union City has really been.
They've done a lot, so, so Monty now works for Mike Klein Peter and so we're talking a little bit about what he might be able to help us with. So we've got some, some possibilities.
Cause we still have that in our budget for twenty-three, I'd like to have some, because those grants are going to other people. And I would like for us to get our share, if at all possible.
Absolutely, and if you have other people that, that you're aware of that we can reach out to, you know, let me know.
We just know them, we've been comfortable with them and they've, they've been effective, I just wanna a- access what good they might be able to do in. Terms of capturing that money while.
Sure, while it's there.
While it's still, I, I have a feeling it might go away in a year and a half or so.
Absolutely, well.
Uh the other thing I had is that um I'm wondering um uh if we are closer to securing. Uh services of Baker Tilly, I uh moved more towards the feeling that that would be a. Useful service after.
Yeah, after the.
Yeah.
Staff, okay. So these are not in any particular order, there's a mixture of items. The first six are uh concrete and brickwork. Seven and eight are ADA issues.
I took my list to, can I look over your shoulder with that?
Didn't I give you one?
Yes, I took it to my office over the last day. Do you have another one, Andy? Oh, thank you.
When you get things put out early, you run into all kinds of problems there. And then on item number eighteen. Uh you would refer to the last two pages for. And then on item number eighteen, you would refer to the last two pages for that list. And that list are security items that were identified. Remember when we had DLZ facilitate the security camera upgrade? They also came in and did a security assessment of all of our buildings here on the campus. And this is a result of that. And obviously, one of those that they did identify is on the second page of that report. About, little less than halfway down, and that's the circuit court issue that we've talked about. Now, I know you wanted to move that up, but that, it, it is on this list.
Okay.
And I might mention, remember a couple of months ago, you, you approved the storefronts, security upgrades for Superior Three?
Right.
On that grant that Corey, that's been finished.
Okay, okay.
And that included, what, keyless locks and, and some security film and a camera, I think.
Could be. And any progress on getting a security committee meeting scheduled?
I, I've called Alan, or I've emailed twice and I've copied you guys on it, and I've not gotten any response.
I will nail him down.
Would you please?
In about fifteen minutes.
I, I know they're busy and...
Everybody is. But that would be helpful in evaluating, you know, having a discussion about some of these, some of these issues. And we, I really, I don't want to talk too much about security issues in this open meeting.
And, and one of the, one of the issue, for prioritization of these, in my mind, and I, I, you know, I can't tell you whether it's number one or number two, but certainly the concrete and the brickwork is only gonna get worse. It's not gonna, it's not gonna get better.
So for some of these things, I think really we need to encourage you. Steve and I took a, a walk around earlier this week. If you guys haven't looked at some of these issues, the sidewalk brickwork, the curbs in the parking lot.
Take a look at them.
The east side retaining wall in the parking lot. Just take, take some time and then we can come back to this next week and...
And then another big ticket item.
Landowners can go down the priority list, then?
It does, it does.
Then another big ticket item, I think you, you know, is, is our discussion on keyless entry.
Right.
You know...
Which again is probably better discussed in the security committee.
You know, over the years, we've, we've had a lot of keys made and out there. So in, in my mind, the, the brickwork and the concrete work is probably at the top of the list. And then there are some of these security issues that are probably in the second tier, but you need to look at them first.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're both high in my opinion. And, you know, honestly, now's the time.
And then I think, I think from over the next couple of months, as the, as this fair committee and Haley gets integrated into that, there's some fairground items on here. And then we've also talked about what we can purchase, that we get a return on our investment through rentals.
Right, right.
And, you know, how you wanna look at that next...
Recommend allocating the next installment of the hundred thousand dollars for naming rights. Do we have any additional naming right opportunities that we need to, need to pursue?
We actually got a couple in the, that seem promising. But, and we've not yet pushed that yet. And Haley is well aware that that's one of her job responsibilities and she is willing to take that on too, so... I, I really see some things starting to snowball out there.
Good.
I'm glad we waited for her to graduate. She's just ideal.
And, and so that, Jeff, that's all I have, unless you have some additional questions or comments or other questions about any of the...
I had a question on the additional 50 amp loads at the camp. Is that adding to the existing?
Yeah.
And they have the, there's more campsites?
Yeah, yeah. And again, Jeff, or Jeff, Brad, that, you know...
It sounded like a Jeff question.
It sounded like a Jeff question. Oh, that's, I apologize.
It wasn't.
I apologize for making that comparison. Yeah, if we go down that route of expanding, you know, camping as an option, yeah. That, also the hydrants are the same thing.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if that was like what we discussed the other day about across the street.
Yeah, they've already got electrical plugins. But remember, one of our items is how we better utilize that 24 acres.
Right.
And...
When, when people camp, pay to camp there, do we collect innkeeper's tax on that? That's a serious question.
No, it is a question, and we, we actually discussed that several years ago, and the answer is no.
Other campgrounds do?
Yeah, yeah, we probably should.
I don't disagree with that.
Okay, other questions on any of these projects?
Regarding this, have we already started to have inquiries about camping for the April eighth total eclipse?
Yeah.
It's booked.
Is it totally booked for April?
The, remember we...
The fairgrounds.
The fairgrounds.
I mean, the fairgrounds.
For a whole week.
Yeah, yeah, and they've anticipated, what, 160 is what they planned on? And...
Hundred and sixty campers.
Yeah, just, just campers, that doesn't...
Right.
And I suggested that we opened up the field to the east or west, I'm sorry.
The 24 acres.
To sell those as camping.
Right, because, well, it already has...
It'll be muddy in April.
It's got some along the front.
Yeah.
And, but you can still, you can still add primitive camping.
Yeah.
But, no, that's, it's our, and into conversation that, you know, Matthew, that meeting, I'm not sure what the goal of that meeting on the, what, 29th?
To talk about...
Yeah, to talk about the eclipse.
How to prepare for it from emergency management's perspective.
Yeah, I don't know whether that, he's talked about stakeholders, whether that included schools and...
I would imagine, yeah, I hope they're closed.
So... But, in answer to your question, the fairgrounds have been rented for that weekend.
Great, because I heard everything was booked.
For what, twelve, about twelve grand, something like that?
Great.
They rented the whole fairgrounds.
You know, we have quite a few acres up on Swolfland Road near Greens Fork. For really primitive, really primitive. That's the, our dump for the highway department.
So, so take a look at these and walk around, take a look at them and then we can talk more detail about them.
Okay.
And we have some properties too, you know, county owns a lot of property that we could...
We just have fourteen houses and some vacant lots.
If you'll mow it, you can camp there.
Let's make sure we collect the innkeeper's tax on them.
Yeah, I think we should.
All right, any, any other questions?
Steve?
I'm done.
No, you're done?
I'm done.
You have an agenda too, don't you? You have a bunch of items.
A couple, just a couple left.
I have a couple.
Go ahead. Ladies first.
I don't believe I have asked or informed, I'm not sure which is appropriate, maybe both. For about six months, a group of us, as headed by ICAP, the Interlocal Community Action Program, in which the commissioners appointed me to be the liaison and I'm actually a voting member of that board, has taken some leadership in solving the emergency housing need in Wayne County. When all other resources were not available, ICAP actually stepped up and paid for motel rooms for the homeless in Wayne County and made cash donations so that individuals who needed to be housed during extremely cold temperatures were actually housed in Wayne County, cash donations. And it was that extreme cold snap that engaged ICAP and they found some money and were able to come up. So then I made contact with Indiana Department of Health regarding grants that were coming available for housing upgrades that could be made available in the coming years. There are grants all over the place. I was hoping to turn that information over to a grant administrator, a grant marketer, if you would. But continued to meet with on a monthly basis people who come over here from IDOH and other agencies to help us get our share of housing upgrades as well as housing stuff. So what's happened is that we now have more housing vouchers. And of course, we all know housing is a great need at all levels, from emergency to high-end housing. And so this is, of course, at the lower end of our housing need. And ICAP, working with Kathy Williams from the council, myself, and a variety of people from the community who've recognized housing as a great need, and there's a housing coalition that meets monthly as well. We have surveyed landlords in the county. The assessors office and the treasurers office have helped us identify the actual locations of every landlord in the county. And we have set a June 28, 6:00 PM meeting for all landlords of Wayne County properties to come and listen to the resources available to them to upgrade their properties so that they can qualify for Section Eight voucher receipts. Federal government has greatly increased the monthly rental on housing to the point that it's extremely competitive with Wayne County's apartment and individual houses rentals in Wayne County. But there is a lot of misconceptions and misgivings about becoming a Section Eight landlord. So we hope to have good attendance from these landlords that we've opened a dialogue with so that we can help alleviate the housing shortage in Wayne County. We can't say this is not a public meeting, but we're certainly hoping that landlords will attend. Of course, you're invited, anyone who's interested in addressing the housing shortage, 6 o'clock. And with your permission, I hope this, I penciled it in on this chamber's availability. I hope you feel that's an appropriate use of this chamber.
Sure. June 28?
Yeah, it's a Thursday, it's a Wednesday night, the fourth Wednesday. I don't think you have any zoning or planning on the fourth Wednesday. I penciled it in, there was no conflicts, but I haven't talked to Joe. I just wanted to talk to you first.
It was blank on the...
Yeah, it was blank out there, but I haven't talked to Joe. Joe's still the one to talk to.
No, no.
Bobby.
Calendar, don't have to, okay, great, great. I think it'll be a good meeting and there's so many resources that I was unaware of until we really got involved in this coalition.
Good, thank you. I got an email from Dan Wandersee in Centerville. And he is asking, okay, so yes, we're moving in that direction. I'm starting to check with individual office holders to see what they have and what, whether they're on board with Baker Tilly, so...
The need became a little more urgent this week, I think.
It did, it did. So yes, I continue to do that. I've also talked to them, and the guy's name escapes me, but...
You've got a lot on your plate.
He's working on, he's an expert on, on TIF financing. And there are, he also does work with ARPA funds. So I'm thinking that it might not be a bad idea to bring them on board to review the ARPA projects just to make sure that, that in their opinion, they qualify, particularly the ones that are the straight ARPA, under the, under the treasure rules.
And grant tracking and all the, I think it's pretty urgent, yeah.
Also, the report writing and so on, so to kind of, and, and they may be able to be the, provide the internal control of checking off reviewing the reports, doing that kind of stuff.
I think we need to tend to that, because it's ultimately falling on us.
Exactly. So I'll hopefully have a report for you again on, on all of those things in the next, by the end of the month.
Yeah, if you...
Anything else from you, Brad?
I have nothing.
Okay. Joe?
Nothing further from me.
Want to just tell us how great it's been to work with us all day today?
It really was, especially with the land use issue. Every illegal basis was covered, so I just, I didn't pipe up at all.
There you go. Okay, easy money, huh?
I'm gonna give Ron the credit, I think you're correct, guys, so...
Yeah, we did have a few very diversified issues before us today, didn't we?
Yeah.
Bobby, anything else? Steve, anything else? All right, if everyone's in agreement, we will adjourn. Thank you.
I think we were...